From last week officially reopened. And I'd just like to remind everyone that in accordance with the Council's code of meeting practice, I inform the persons attending this meeting that this meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on Council's website. And the person attending this meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. We've already, we don't need to continue on with the, because we're in the same meeting with the acknowledgement of the National Anthem. There's no Council's approval or anything, there's no apologies, there's nothing changed. However, should, if Councils would like to, we can have the prayer and everything else read out. Does anybody have any views or are we happy to proceed? Happy to proceed Deputy Mayor? Any dissenting views? No, we'll move straight into it then. So we have a new, we have an updated run order sheet. Does everybody have one of those updated run order sheets? Yep, alright, great. So we'll just go off of that. There is just one mayor or minute which should be just purely about the CEO performance review panel, but we'll deal with that at the end. Happy to do with that at the end. So we'll now move on to operations. Operations 03, the report, Keep Australia Beautiful, page 181, tab 1 with the recommendation on page 182. Yeah, I probably should get mine up as well, I'm ready to go.
I'll move as per the book.
Move Counsel Monahan, seconded Counselor McNaught. Any discussion?
If I could just, if I could just reiterate the congratulations to the staff on the, on the achievement of this award and such an important acknowledgement of their hard work and our circular economy is, the work is strong and continuing and now award winning. So congratulations.
Wonderful. Any other further speakers? Counsel, Deputy Mayor, no?
No, just, just a similar point of view. I think it's great that we've done this, it's good, it promotes council, promotes what we're all trying to do is with the circular economy. And I think it's a great idea, we should get the QDOS, thank you.
Wonderful. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declared carried. Next item is operations 04, electric vehicle charging stations, page number 185, tab 2 with the recommendation on page 185.
I'm happy to move that way.
Sorry, just one sec. The tabs is not correct, is it? Is it correct? No, the page number, but the tab, it's not tab 2 would be. Okay, disregard the tabs, they're just how they got ordered, so my apologies. Okay, who, did you move it? Oh, moved Counsel McNaught, seconded Counselor Green. The recommendation of the book. Is there any discussion?
Might I ask a question through the chair to the CEO? Did council apply for any of the funding that was available? There was a particular funding stream for EV charge stations. I understand that it was actually undersubscribed, so it might be worth having a look at that. And, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if it's closed or whatever, but there was a funding stream available.
I'll pass that over to the CEO.
Thank you, I'll take, thank you for the question Counselor, I'll take it on notice. It is important to identify that the funding, the grant funding also went to the potential suppliers, many of which have contacted council. So we are in receipt of grant funding albeit in the inverse via a supplier who has New South Wales Government approval and, and funding to proceed with councils who are willing to take up that process.
Is there any further discussion? Alright, I will put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, look at that unanimous. Next item is operations 05, water play feature plant, sorry, water play feature plant and equipment replacement on Macquarie Mall, page 188, with the recommendation on page 188.
I'm happy to move, but I have some questions.
Yeah, move Counsel McNaught, seconded.
I've got a motion, a foreshadowed motion.
Yep, Counsel McNaught, yes.
My question is relating to whether or not there is insurance around this equipment and whether that's been explored or not as a funding source.
More, prefer that to the CEO.
Thank you for the question Counselor, to the Director of Operations.
So through the acting CEO, we've made inquiries to that effect and we're just waiting for a response. But we felt it was important to get the paper up, just given the urgency of it. Thank you.
I can just ask one further follow-up question to that. Should there be insurance money that does come in to cover that, it can be easily reconciled back into the, whatever we do now, yeah?
That's correct. So what we'll do if we're covered by insurance, the costings will change and we'll report that back to council.
Okay. Counsel Harriers?
Just a question. I hate to say this, but my background's in this, electrical engineering, and I look at the prices of this. Did we get multiple quotes for this?
Through the acting CEO, what I know is that we did get initial quotes, but I couldn't tell you by how many, so I'll take the question on notice, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
So Counsel Resefsi, what is your foreshadowed motion?
I'll wait for them to put it up on the screen. It's basically 1, 2, 3, 4, and I've just got a point 5 attached to it.
Yeah, just, just to go back on to...
Actually, can I make an amendment if the original mover, Counselor McNaught, would allow me to put point 5 in, rather than a foreshadowed motion?
Well, I've just got to see that, yeah, so Counselor McNaught, and I think we just have to make sure that, I know that the executive summary talks about the funding source, can we please just make sure that the funding source is made as part of the recommendation? Going forward, please. So Counsel McNaught, you would need to identify a funding source, and in the executive summary it does say, general reserve.
I'd like it to come from the general reserve where it's been reported to come from.
Yes, so just be mindful of that. So having said that then, are you happy to adopt Counsel's, or Resefsi's recommendation that it become the CEO's office budget?
Given that, given that I've asked the questions about insurance and replacement costs and things like that, I think it's best to go with the recommendation that we had, so I wouldn't be happy to, to adopt point 5.
Yep. So now Counselor Resefsi, I'll take that as a no, but now do you have a second or for your foreshadowed motion? Oh, the foreshadowed motion lapses. Pardon?
Yes.
Seconded Counsel Monahan. Now, just need to understand just the legalities regards to question 5, is, are you, Counsel Resefsi, are you aware how much funds is in the CEO's office budget and what they're allocated for?
I know that there's enough to cover that.
Do you know what that funding is for, that in the CEO's office, the CEO budget?
Considering the situation we find ourselves in, we are looking for cuts everywhere, especially with our unrestricted cash reserves where they sit, we can't always be dipping a hand into that kitty.
So what would you like to cut from the CEO's budget?
I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, it's up to the CEO to determine that.
I don't know, do we know what's in that, in that budget, how much is available? I don't have any understanding of it.
I have to take the notice, thanks for the question. And the motion, I have to take it on notice because obviously we're in the middle of a year, a financial year, so what the residual amount is in the office of the CEO budget, I'd have to take it on notice. In any case, I guess if I go back to Counselor McNaught's original position, the costing is not known and should not be forecast until the Director of Operations can inform council as to the insurance position in relation to the costs, because we could be up for additional premium only, or a residual, or anything up to the amount of the quote. So perhaps if we took the, took it on notice to advise council as to our insurance position in the December meeting, and then we can give you some clarity about the exact cost, and then concurrently I can give you an idea about what's left in the reserve and also the other budget.
Yeah.
We can defer it or...
That would seem to be the most logical course of action if we don't know how much, if any, insurance will cover, rather than allocating any funding regardless of the, the source of that funding at the moment, it's probably best that we find out what, if anything, insurance will cover.
And it's... Sorry, just one second, Deputy Mayor first, and then I'll get to you Counselor Harriers.
I have to revert it to me, I'll do it.
The question I asked earlier is the cost of this. So the cost, I don't know where the cost has come from, has it been a tender, has it been quotes, these sorts, has it gone for tender? I would like to know if there's multiple tenders, how did they compare with each other? Because as I say, looking at this pump, submersible pump replacement, eight and a half thousand dollars, you can get pumps for, you know, a quarter of that, stainless steel, the whole... I just don't understand why it's so high, the control equipment. And as I say, this is something I'm familiar with, background in electrical engineering, control equipment, I think it's quite high, even though I've been out of it for a number of years, but I still would like to see a tender process where we get comparative quotes before we sort of say, let's go ahead with this. My humble opinion.
Well, I guess, just one sec before we respond to that, Counsel Kinnib.
Yes, I think I'll just, I was going to say what the Deputy Mayor said, but I think in addition to the points he raises about the costing and the tenders that the Director of Operations has taken on notice, I think a more pragmatic approach would be to defer this item so we can, number one, get the answers on the tenders, who they are, what the solution, what the decision-making process was there. But I think more importantly, and I thank the Director for answering it, because I think if, if an item comes in the agenda like this and whilst it's, it's all, it's obviously time important in terms of rectifying this issue, but it's also important to know exactly what it's, what the cost of it will be to, will be to council in circumstances. Well, it may just be covered by an insurance premium, if it is in fact covered, or whether or not it's just simply an act of, an act of God may it be, being the weather and therefore we're not covered. But I think before we make a decision on it, we need to really know what the, what the cost will be, and that'll fine tune the acting CEO's answer around whether or not the entry to the CEO budgetary requirement is even needed, and whether or not we even need 166,000. But I think first step first, the Deputy, the Deputy Mayor raises some concerns, some good concerns about the tender process and the costing, particularly in his experience of course, but also having that put before us, and I think it was you, Mr Mayor, that identified that there was no funding source, that like, really, we should know where it's coming from. But I think to yield it back twofold, it's the insurance process and what the Deputy Mayor raises, I think should be exhausted first, so then it can come back perhaps next month, and if it's not next month, it's the month after. But really, making a decision as to the quantum of price we spend being 166,000, I think, I think every single person, probably the community, will contact their insurer first to see if they're covered and then make a determination as to the costing. So I think that's what we should do.
So can we just some clarification, what is the time implications of this? Should council defer this or should council approve this now? When is, when was this work expected to be done? Being mindful that it is Christmas and 40 degrees outside, I think it was today.
Thank you. Through the chair, I guess that's the question for council. If, if we could deal with it today on the undertaking from the acting CEO that the costs build up, the quotes, my, my understanding is that the people involved in the cost build up have applied the procurement requirements, which need two or three quotes to this number, and these are underlying the numbers, they're just not in, obviously appearing in the report, that's the first thing. So we could do that. Secondly, what we, what we would probably like to do is get those works ready to press the button, given that the 10th, the next meeting's at 10th of December, it's a water park, it's Christmas time, ideally we want to get it functional. So if council were minded to proceed on the undertaking that we will not commence the works or expend one cent until such time as the council have been advised of the build up of costs, the, the, the understanding of the costs and also the insurance position, I think that could be a middle ground, we could work with operationally, that way we can start working on actually getting the work done and press the button if and when council approve it.
So would this then be, sorry, you'd say, so there is, so it is, just to get an idea, so clarity, that when do you think that this work could be, be done? Because I, I'm just, I'm just mindful of trying to get anything done this side of the year.
So I think we could find out the insurance position this week. That's the first thing. I think we can get the build up of costs this week, that is what we've done, because I'm almost positive, I am positive, that the people involved in this have applied section 55, so the build up of costs would be available. And then we'll take, I guess, unless the Director of Operations knows the date of construction or the intended date of construction, I'll take it on notice, but this week I will then advise you about when the construction could take place. At the very worst case scenario is in, if it is approved today, is we push it back in any case to the 10th, because we haven't got the information to which I undertake.
Counsel McNaught?
I just wanted to know, so is that facility in the more completely unusable at the moment in the, in the form that it's in?
I mean, you can play on it, you just can't get wet and play on it.
Sun of 40 degree day, there's no water. Thank you.
So I think councillors, if I can, if we could, if we added a point in there that said, you know, this is subject to the CEO circulating, circulating reports, don't do it yet, please, is subject to count to CEO circulating report, that I guess covers the questions raised with regards to insurance and procurement. That's, that way they can get going on it and the insurance, they find out the insurance, they'll find that out quickly and as they'll keep on going on. And just Counsel Kinnib raised, just from a procurement point of view, that tenders, what is it, what's, what's the number before it comes to council? And the delegation under the Act to the, to the CEO is, anything below a million? General counsel.
The threshold for tenders is $250,000. Below that, we still have procurement standards, so we look at multiple quotes above a certain threshold, I think it's 100,000 and below that it's a lesser number. So we follow a competitive process, come what may, unless it's a very, very low contract.
And so through the CEO, what would the CEO's delegation to be, that when, when do they actually get reported to council at what threshold?
$2 million for awards post-tender, and anything which doesn't require a tender, there's a $5 million financial delegation.
Can I just ask two questions, if I may? When did it stop working? Is the first question, and the second question is, if we were to resolve it in the way you've suggested, if the works aren't going to commence till post 10 December, because I noted your comments about not starting something on this side of this year, if it's, if the, is it the anticipation from council that construction will commence before 10 December? Because if it's not, I think it's worthwhile waiting for the acting CEO's answers in respect of that, that we anticipate we'll get this year, sorry, this week, and then we're really early December, and then we're back in seven, eight days' time in any event. I don't really think eight days in the scheme of things is going to hinder us, that's just my opinion. But yeah, just those two questions, when did it stop working and when are we going to start construction?
I'll refer the question to the Director of Operations about any knowledge of when it stopped. I guess the, the second part of the question, if we were told tomorrow that we were insured, in a typical world, we'd proceed at risk, because we'd have written confirmation that we're insured, and we'd go and start the procurement of the work tomorrow, subject to the quotes being okay and et cetera, et cetera. So we could, that, that wouldn't hinder us starting the works, but I'll just pop over to the Director of Operations to see if we understand when it was failing.
So through the acting CEO, I don't have the exact date, but it was about three weeks ago. It's approximately three weeks ago.
Is it possible to get a, a new motion with that wording that the CEO mentioned, start the works, but it comes back to council so we know what it costs and the positional insurance? Because the two motions in front of us don't really cover that.
Yeah, yeah, Counsel, yeah. And look, and I just, bearing in mind of keeping things from our point of view strategic, is that how much the nitty gritty? I, I agree with the Deputy Mayor's point, that when you look at numbers, the numbers look large, this is modern day procurement and the challenge that, you know, council can't negotiate with people, once we get their prices back in, we get their prices back in. And yeah, you know, I'm sure there's, there's many examples that we could use, that things could come in cheaper, but this is the way that the law government works, and I'm sure the staff do what they, what they can on that. So I just, mindful of our $200 million plus capital works program, and this represents probably, what is the percentage? Not that much of it. Yeah. My recommendation, I think if we just say, let's, let's keep it, let's keep it moving along, you know, this ultimately, we're either going to repair it or we're going to not. We have an idea of 165, it's only going to go lower than that, you'd want to hope. So the, being mindful of time, I think my view is that if we say, the wording, once again, subject, subject to the CEO providing a report, circulating a report to councillors with regards to whether it can be funded for insurance, the program, and so on and so forth.
So I could just add that in to the original motion after the words, that council, subject to a report.
So add that to that council?
Put, you can put it at point six, subject to a report, or you can put it before point one, whatever you want to do.
You can do a point six, you can do a point six, the above to happen, subject to a, a report with, a report with regards to insurance, procurement, timeline be circulated to council. Prior to commencement? Is the secondor happy with that? Alright. Deputy Mayor, did you want to, what are you going to say?
Just, just my, my comment to this is, this is not going to be done in a week, this is going to take longer. The control equipment that you want for that is specifically going to have to be tailored to that particular application. That means time by some, for someone to design that, look at the old one, and then come up with something similar to that. That's going to take a week at least. I think you're looking at this, that this is not going to be operational during the holiday period, simply because of the work that's needed to replace that, unless you can use the old equipment, which I doubt, and therefore that has to be designed from, from scratch, using what you've got, that's going to take time, you're not going to get this done in a week. This is going to take months, I think, that's from...
Yeah, yeah. But I guess, I guess the question does is, do we just move it on, do we, do we slow it down till the, when's our next meeting, the 10th, was it? Say the 10th of December? Yeah. Alright, is there any other further discussion?
Yeah, look, I'll just say that in respect of the entirety of it, I think that whether it's funding source A or funding source B, whichever way you look at it, I think both of them need to have exceptions, except if, if funding is to be covered through insurance, because obviously that is, is a preface before we start spending money from either the general reserve or the CEO's budget. So the, the motion should, in terms of both, both of them should be worded that way. But I, I, I support the Deputy Mayor's position, I just think that it should be, it should go over to the 10th, because from what the acting CEO says, we're going to have answers twofold in respect of what the costing is likely to be and whether or not there's going to be an insurance answer. And if it's not going to be built this side of this year, there's just, we may as well wait for it, that's my view.
Yeah, that's what the report tells, and I guess the question is, how much do you want to play project manager, you know, in getting into operational matters versus actually saying, yep, go for it, it's $165,000, start the process, if you can get it from insurance, great, if not, just go ahead and do with it. You mean, yeah.
Actually, I'd like to amend my motion. One, defer. Two, a report to come back to council in relation to point six, exact wording.
Is the secondor happy with that? Cool. Okay. Let's see. Alright. Well now, is there any Counselor McNaught, would you like to write a reply?
I think everything's been said, Mr Mayor, I just think that, you know, you're only need to look outside today, we're on a 40 degree day, we have young kids who rely on this kind of public facility to, to stay cool in the summer, and I don't want to see it held up any longer than it needs to be, there've already been three weeks without it, I don't know how long it will take, but I don't want to delay that.
Alright, alright. Okay, we'll now move the motion as, put the motion as moved by Counsel McNaught, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declared carried. We'll now move on to committee 01. What can I say, we've got the three committees, it's the four committees, does anyone have any, does anyone have any views on, do you want to move them as a whole?
I'd like to move them as a whole.
Move as Counsel McNaught, seconded Counselor Green. So the motion is that we move committee 1, 2, 3 and 4 as a whole. Move the secondor, any discussion?
I've just got a couple of questions in the Order Risk Committee. There was a mention of... 7.2, the committee had concerns that the adjustments between the original draft financial statements and the audited financial statements were not provided to the committee. What happened in that instance? And why was, why wasn't it provided?
Yes, right to the CEO.
Thank you for the question Counsel. I was aware of that. The Director of Corporate Services has fallen ill tonight, who had some discreet knowledge of that issue. It was resolved today, Eric, but I don't know the exact thing, so I'll take it on notice, and we will detail that ASAP as to the ration, are the reasons why it was required?
Few more, sorry, a few more in relation to that committee as well. On page 220, PWC identified in the closing report, there were two high-risk items, but I couldn't find that in the minutes anywhere. Does anyone know what they are?
Similarly, thank you for the question Counsel. Director Corporate Services again is ill. It's a detailed question, was present, it was mentioned, it is reflected correctly, I just don't have the detail of what those risk items were, but we'll take that on notice and get back to you ASAP.
Same committee. Down the bottom of that, the committee raised concerns regarding the progress of risk actions. Many instances were noted where deadlines had passed without sufficient progress. Bit of background on why, why is that happening?
Thank you for the question Counselor. I myself personally reviewed the risk register. We were, we are moving to an automated system acronym of CAMMS. Some of the triggers to review the risks were passed. We have, the executive have sat in, risk meetings are now corrected, all that. Basically a systems training issue, not something inherent in our approach to risk, as risk is mentioned in every ELT meeting. It was more about our capability at the stage introducing a new system to directors, where those triggers weren't automatically automated now to Outlook, at which stage they are now, so. So we've got an email, if something, if something passed us now on a, on a risk date, the director in charge will get a, an email warning them. So that's, that's what happened there.
Sorry, I've got two more. On page 223, Internal Audit Activities Report, in relation to the overtime report, the committee had no visibility on management's response to the matters raised. Has that been rectified now?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question. I'll refer to the director, customer experience and business performance with a, with a context being rectification, I think was your question.
Thank you through the acting CEO. The, there was a conversation at Eric around the overtime report and we had previously had a conversation with the executive about that exact report and rectifications were being put in place as a result of that.
And one final one, general business, it's saying that the committee raised concerns about resourcing levels that they, they need additional resources to handle the increased workload. They need in particular an additional role, has that been filled or still looking?
Thank you, thank you councillor, I'll just refer again to the director of customer experience and business performance.
Thank you through the acting CEO, that role is still in play, we haven't gone to market just yet, we're rationalising the program and going back to Eric.
I just have one comment. For the governance committee minutes, during the delivery management framework discussion, I think I requested a, a report that came to the governance committee every quarter with regards to projects that reach every single stage that was outlined in that, in, in that line of business. So can we get that put in there as well, please?
Were you referring, sorry, were you referring to the governance or the, what meaning were you referring to governance or the audit and risk? We're just not. Oh, as a whole, sorry, where's the? Yeah, we technically haven't called that, but, no, just only because I'm just going in order, that's why I didn't.
If you're doing it as a whole, does it include that one?
Technically, you could argue that, you could if you wanted to. But did we, we're in governance meeting, committee 05, can we just go back up what the original motion is, please? Have you moved, have you written them down individually, one by one, moving them as a whole or? Moving them as a whole, okay, great. So just to confirm with everyone, so it's committee one, two, three and four, and in again, addendum four, committee five, is that what the mover and secondor intended? Yep, okay, great. We can, just to make sure, sorry. Councillor Hart, can you turn off your microphone, please?
Thank you, and through the chair, I'll refer to the director of operations in relation to the question from councillor Hart. Just also in context, the previous question from councillor Restevsky, you might see in the bottom line of general business that the acting CEO confirmed as part of the next restructure, consideration will be given to where that audit function sits. So whilst the director of customer and business performance answered the question, there was strong consideration of where we play with audit and risk and whether that's a role that should be played next to the CEO in the future. And I'll refer to the director of operations for councillor Hart's question.
So through the acting CEO, if I answer specifically what councillor Hart has asked, it was when we were going through the delivery management framework and we were showing the monthly major project status reports and there was a summary table at the front of that, the councillor and others within the room asked, can that be provided on a quarterly basis? So I know specifically what the councillor is asking for and we agreed to do that. I'm just not sure if it's minuted per what you have said councillor, but I know what he, what he's required and we will do that.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you for refreshing my mind. I knew it was, I knew what it was, but not exactly the exact details, so thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, we move committee one, two, three, four and five in the addendum booklet. All those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it unanimous. Questions with notice, councillor Green, page 227.
Thank you, I appreciate the report. I was just wondering where it says, in a, does that mean not applicable, not available? I'm just wondering, because I guess my second question would be, is there a specific budget that's set aside for festivals?
Thank you for the question councillor, yes, the answer is yes, but I'm going to refer to the relevant director, community and lifestyle.
Thank you through the chair, there's a bucket of money for, for major events and each of the series of events have money allocated to them. So the Experience the World as a festivals is a bucket of money. However, we do consider when we get grants, they're specifically used for the, for the funding that they've been secured for.
I've got a question in relation to that same page. Under internal funding, the column that says as above, there's four of them and no numbers there, what, what does that mean?
So the, through the chair, so the bucket of the $500,000 was allocated as additional funding, which we allocated to the Experience the World festivals. So all that money was used as a new bucket for those additional festivals, if that makes sense? Yes, so it was spread over the four festivals that, that it was allocated. So the money that came and was resolved by council was to have 500,000 dedicated to the major events budget, which we then allocated to the four new festivals.
And under the influencer, there's no total on the bottom, any particular reason?
No, but I can tell you it adds about 20, 20,000, I believe.
In relation to those influencers, who actually makes the decisions on who to engage?
Through the chair, we work very closely with our comms team and they advise on the best approach to take. They're our SMEs in the area, alongside our major, our manager, cultural venues and festivals, who is attuned to the market and, and who is, you know, quite, you know, I guess going to get the best response in terms of the influencers. But sometimes they have councillors, they come organically and you could see that through the response paper.
And how much has council spent on small business programs in the last 12 months?
Sorry councillor, that has nothing to do with this. What's this is councillor, what councillor Green's question?
Festivals are meant to stimulate business activity in the CBD, so small business operators operate in that space.
Yeah, councillor.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to say, if you allow me to finish, I'd like to know, have we spent any money on small business programs, considering we've just spent $20,000 on influencers?
I'm, I'll, feel free to answer it if you like, but I just think that this is the purpose, just to clarify, questions with notices is to ask a question and the staff appear notice, the person asked the question has got some clarification regarding it. I'll let this one go through, but in future, please submit it as a question with notice to the CEO.
Thank you, thank you for the question councillor. I will take it on notice in relation to, I think the context is on other small businesses. We could argue that an influencer is a sole trader. But I, I assume the context is other small business, other than event staff. We, we have a lot of programs, what I'll do is I'll get some context for you, take it on notice and we will detail what we spend on other small businesses as opposed to events.
Sorry councillor Green, that I'm hijacking your question with notice. I've noticed that we've added extra events in 2024. When was it decided to add these additional events to the program, particularly when council was aware of its budget constraints across the entire organization?
To the CEO, but I think with the budget, that was in a much better position than what we were, the balanced, balanced budget leaving a surplus.
Yeah, council met as part of the final budget review moving into the year and allocated the funds at that period. I, I remember it was a $500,000 additional budget allocation to run the events and then the director was to apportion those funds and so it would have been, just prior to the budget being finalized, our last council and staff meeting, I think it was.
If I could add something additional, on the back of the success and the awards that we're winning for the events and the community's response, it was also strategically advised that we had some more events for, for Liverpool because they were getting greater success.
There's an item on page 231, Bossman Experiences was paid $9,000 as a storeholder coordinator. What does that mean? And it was subsidized by some revenue.
Yeah, thank you for the question. In the, on the same page, it describes that Bossman Experiences, he created a curated lineup of high profile vendors to boost visibility for the event and target the elusive demographic market. So it's a coordinator of vendors was paid, engaged as a storeholder coordinator and that was subsidized by storeholder revenue. Then there's a calculation about the reach achieving a value of 25,000, had influencers been directly engaged in doing the same type of work. And as we can see there, council, it's, it's a pilot initiative and in review it provided particularly effective, sorry, proved particularly effective in testing contemporary marketing practices and, and as such will be tested more broadly for future events.
Were any food vans paid to attend the festivals?
No councillor, they weren't.
Were any administrators from any local community Facebook groups paid or given any incentives to promote the events?
No councillor, they weren't.
Next question is councillor Green, question 02, page 233. Mosquitoes.
Thank you for the information, which was quite enlightening. I'm wondering, I guess as a question, further question or a suggestion, either way, because we, I've got changing weather patterns in terms of, you know, we're headed for another wet and humid summer as we did have last year. I'm wondering if it would be prudent to incorporate or somehow dovetail the mosquito management plan with, within our climate action policy or whether the climate action policy should be a suite of policies with the mosquito action plan. I personally would like to see a, a heat, a heat plan, a heat policy within there so that as a council, we are prepared for differing weather events that, you know, that we, we, we don't know what we will face in the future, but given that this, particularly with the mosquito, we need to get on top of it. And, and hopefully, all fingers and toes crossed, that we won't ever, we won't have to face something so drastic again. But in terms of weather, I think it's, it's prudent and, and sensible to think, well, to, to consider that these events, the weather events will bring different, different things along. So I'm just wondering whether it's a question, suggestion, I don't know, but whether it should actually become part of our climate action policy.
If, if I can comment, I think there's, I think that definitely warrants further discussion, probably at a, the whole mosquito management, climate plan, so on and so forth. Maybe it's something we can discuss in detail and get a briefing on during a, a governance meeting to see what we can do, if you would be happy with that councillor Green.
Yep, I'd appreciate that because, you know, I think, you know, this is an area I think that council could actually take some leadership on in terms of either with preparing community, with us being prepared as well, so that when we're hit, we are hit with something like this again, that we, we proactively respond rather than reactive.
Yep. And in the recent investigations with mosquitoes, if I can say the, what we plant can make a difference. So when we're, and we do a fair bit of planting around the place, and my understanding is that meadow sage actually attracts dragonflies and dragonflies can eat up to 100 mosquitoes a day. So we need our own army of dragonflies, all right?
Learned a lot out of this whole experience.
Indeed.
Yep, councillor McNaul?
Yeah, at, at risk of hijacking your question again, but if we could, when, when it comes to that, and, and, you know, I've spoken to councillor Green about this previously, you know, having a suite of policies and particularly things like a heat policy and or an action plan when it comes to heat would help us to move through more seamlessly when, when we do have events that are, that we know are coming and we can forecast. So perhaps that presentation at a governance committee could be quite at a, at a, you know, a basic sort of level so that we can all chuck our ideas in a bucket first and then, and then start to develop from there, if that's not too crude of a way to describe it.
Practical session, so, so just, we'll, we'll put that, we.
I do have a number of, of questions.
Yep, sorry.
About the question on notice. Now, is the arbor virus program a separate program to the mosquito management plan? Through the CEO to the relevant director, please.
I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you, I'll refer to the director of operations, our new mosquito expert.
Through the acting CEO, I'll take that specific question on notice because I am not the mosquito expert and you're asking about an arbor virus, I would like to take the question on notice if I can, thank you.
Thank you, no, no, that's totally understandable. Now, an initial budget allocation of $30,000 was directed to address the plan. In the question, it said, in the answer to that part of the question, the initial budget allocation was removed after the first year as our financial section believed it was only a one-year allocation. Does that, is that meant to say that the plan did not exist, that is, it was not funded in the 2020, 2021, 2021, 2022 financial years? Through the acting CEO to the relevant director.
Yeah, thank you councillor, thanks for the question. So obviously predates both the director and myself, but that is my understanding as well. Notwithstanding, I, I, there is no evidence whatsoever that we did not continue to adhere to the mosquito plan. In fact, during my first week at council, a officer named Hadasi walked into my office with his collection of mosquitoes and we were working with a CSIRO on weekly collection of mosquitoes, tracking their paths in and around other waterways within the council area. And he has been doing so every week since and I thought, whilst it was rather unusual, did inquire as to the mosquito plan and it was evidenced that the mosquito plan was in fact a real plan and to, to the extent that we were managing it without the outbreak, we were also doing so without a dedicated budget for it.
I understand that. So if there was no budget for it and the plan was still being carried out, was this on a volunteer basis or was, was funding diverted from another directorate or how was it funded?
I think the officer Hadasi was so passionate about mosquitoes that he was doing it in his, his bush regen job as an add-on for the CSIRO. So the monitoring of it, the whole plan of course was not continued after the first funded year, but the rationale behind its removal from funding, we could probably find its removal from funding, we could probably find some historical evidence if that was of interest. But I understand as of the last meeting, funding's been resumed now in any case.
Yes, and yeah, it was clarified that it would be on an ongoing basis annually as needed, so that the mistake of our believing that one-year allocation wasn't, wasn't misunderstood. Now, could I just clarify? So that means that for those two years, the plan wasn't operational. But there's some conflicting advice provided to the notice of motion that we've already dealt with, but I believe is is relevant to this question, that council was delivering the plan since 2019, but it wasn't being delivered for two years. Is that correct?
Yeah, the anomaly is only in there's no suggestion that we are saying that the plan was fully delivered per the original funded year. What I'm saying is that officers on their own accord took parts of the plan and continued with the plan, including the monitoring of the species.
So that concludes my questions for now.
Yeah, I've got a question. If it was continuing, and if it was continuing, there was no issues, why was it reestablished? Well, it was clearly reestablished in 2022, 2023. Was that a resolution of council of that year? And if it wasn't, who made the determination to reinstate certain funding? And how was the allocation of 18,000 to 20,000 determined? Because clearly that answer says that it was it was due to this particular bad season, further funding will be required. Is that, am I to infer from that, that that particular line, but due to this particular bad season, further funding will be required? Is that talking about the current climate being 24, 2024? Or is that talking about 2022 to 2023, which is why funding was allocated?
Yeah, my interpretation of the reading was that the budget was increased from 18 to 20. And then the last sentence stands alone and talks about a future position. So or the, sorry, the position of the current year. So due to this particularly bad season, further funding will be required. And it also asked council to reflect on the years in absence, to what extent COVID was part of that.
So, sorry, just through the through the acting CEO to the relevant director, I guess my question is, was there a resolution of council in 2022 to 2023? And if there wasn't, how was the determination made to reestablish funding?
So thank you, councillor, for the question. I'll take it on notice. I again, it's about rationale, about thought, about why the the budget was reforecast. And I can't answer it at the current time. But I'll take it on notice with the director.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on. We'll now go to addendum booklet four, com zero seven, policy review, code of meeting practice.
I'd like to defer this item.
Defer? Do you have a second, there?
Um, if I could speak to it for a moment. The previous, oh, it was someone else.
No, let's go, go, go.
The, I think the previous meeting demonstrated that something in the way that items are brought to council, some way, the order of business could be made more logical and made more efficient. And I think that the report to adopt the draft meeting code of practice in its current form should be deferred until the next meeting to give not only council hours but council staff a better understanding of how we can more efficiently manage our meetings, given that, I think we had some 48 agenda items for this meeting. And we've had to do it over two separate days. And it's already seven o'clock. This probably looks like this meeting will go the distance. So there should be some way that we can streamline and make more efficient our agenda and the order of our agenda. So I'd like to defer the item until that has been considered. And pending other speakers, I would also have a few questions of the relevant director.
Just want, just want to say with regards to that, the 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 option is available into providing, I guess, strict speaking limits and times, two speakers for, two speakers against. There is, there is that. So if we can definitely implement that, and if 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 people wanted to, but ideally, it's, I think, I've personally always taken the view that it's important to let every council make sure that they've had their say on a matter. And as we go back and forth a little bit to work, iron everything out, so to speak, before we do. But that does come with the the part where it does take up more time. So so happy to discuss that. And I'm happy to, I have no issues with personally deferring it. Councillor Cunney?
Just echoing your position, Mr Mayor and councillor Monahan, I just think that the code of meeting practice is is a very dense practice. And I think it needs, when we go back to the first meeting, there was a lot of discussion about it. I think it's important to make sure that things are right, and that we're all in agreeance of how they're interpreted, particularly for this council sitting, being a new cohort of new councillors, making sure that everyone's abreast of the topics and that interpretation. So I think deferring the item is is a crucial one, because obviously it controls the governance of how the meeting is to work. And yes, whilst that last meeting may have really been the first meeting since the election, granted, the first, the first meeting in itself didn't really have many agenda items, there was, there was a lot in there. And like we practically did with those committee ones that weren't in, that really didn't have any, any dispute on the floor, I think that, you know, the way the agenda's structured, certain things that councillors can put in in terms of notice of motions, the timings of that, the accessibility, I also think of 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 the papers and all of that stuff. I just want the opportunity to be able to ask the director relevant questions. But obviously, if councillor Monahan's got some questions now, that's fine.
Councillor McNaught?
Um, I just wanted to, to, I have some changes I'd like to make. But just for clarity, we we need to do this in in a certain timeframe. Is deferring it going to make a difference to that timeframe would be my first question, because I understand there's quite an extensive public display period as well, where we do get a second bite of the cherry to come back and have a look at it. And my other question is that I thought that this was brought to the briefing session or the or the governance committee already. I just wanted to double check whether that was the case.
I'll refer to the CEO.
Uh, through the CEO, yes, it was brought to the governance meeting for discussion. If we proceed, because it has a a public exhibition period, which will allow you to have time to review and consider broader feedback, not only from the community but yourselves. So my recommendation is we continue it on, to allow the process to continue because we are adopting a new format in the, in terms of timeframes and meeting times and the like. And this captures all that in February. Delaying it will mean that we don't bring this back till February, which means we probably won't be able to bring it back to April. So it really delays the timeframe. But just for your consideration.
Councillor AJ?
Yeah, definitely. I think when we had the meeting upstairs, they did, did even code of conduct review, the lady quoting from video, going through the point and everything. So I I believe that we should move ahead and put it onto the public inquiry, and councillors can take time.
Public exhibition, you mean?
Oh, public exhibition. Um, you know what I meant. So then we can move on because we can delay things and delay things. But it's still English. Whether it's written in a a manner of everybody can understand the common English and the points and all that drafting, code of conduct, it's just sometimes we need to act practical with common sense and and then just, you know, act in a mature way and a manner that we can do things and move on with the agenda of what Liverpool requires to do. Thank you.
All right. Just having, having said that through the CEO, if this gets deferred to the December 10th meeting, is that going to add too much? Because I imagine, I imagine now we're not really going to go on, well, when are we, what is the timeline for exhibition with the Christmas period and so on and so forth?
Having microphone troubles. Through the CEO, we normally don't go out at public exhibition during the closure period and the Christmas period because the people are away. So we wouldn't go out till late January. So we'll delay it coming back to at least the March meeting, if we resolve it in December.
Yeah, I guess what, if we resolve it today, what what is the timeline for exhibition through the CEO?
It's 28 days and 42 days to respond, we've allowed in the report. So if the resolution says, no, it supports the commencement of public listen for at least 28 days. And we've also suggested a 42 days of to provide feedback back to the council. So it's 28 days public exhibition largely is the long and short.
Which I was trying to think, they'll take us, so you keep it up until March, mid-January?
Yeah, so the expectation is we come back the first meeting in February or the second in February, either or, depending on the amount of feedback we do receive, which will.
Hmm. I'm just thinking that we could, we could, if December 10 doesn't change that too too much, we could probably get to the second February meeting back to council. Correct. So it would be, and if the councils wanted that extra time till the 10th, if that was enough time to review it?
Yes, I think that's, that's.
It's not to the preferences. Okay.
If I could just make a note, if there is changes that you wish to proceed, to please advise us, because the reports are due for December as we speak. So I'll need to make those changes and put a revised report up for the December council meeting.
Yep. So basically, if you want to have an inefficient quick meeting to get those changes.
I will be efficient and very, very efficient with this. I will have some recommendations to you. What is today, Tuesday, by close of business tomorrow?
And councillor, if you feel free to circulate it to the councillor, so we all can have a have that discussion and add on to it. Maybe we can.
I'd be happy to do that.
All right, lovely. All right. If, is there any further discussion? No. Councillor Deputy Mayor?
Sorry. So we're going to this, we're going to put this out on on public display between now.
No, the the recommendation is we defer this.
Yep.
And it comes back to the 10th of December meeting to allow, and then from there, we'd go on exhibition. And and it would be over, over the Christmas period and extended period.
Yep.
And basically, we won't.
That's what I thought you meant. I, you know, previously, we've said we don't do anything over the Christmas period because people are away. And I thought, hang on, you can't do this. But I understand.
Yeah, I think we'll keep it out, send it out, let it be over, over Christmas and more. So you'd imagine it'll probably close mid of February to make the final February meeting in some, or March, or come, depending on what comes back from the community. All right. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. No?
That wasn't unanimous.
That was unanimous. Okay. Next item is operations zero six.
I've got a motion.
Which is included in addendum booklet four, eleven zero three, the recommendation on page eleven zero three. Yes, councillor, what's your motion?
Uh, point one, as per the book, and I've got a point two, which is about to come onto the screen. That one there. We're having a look at that report. Just a little bit concerning, we've got around $3.7 million worth of works funded from general reserves, which are virtually at zero. So I'm wording my point to as broad as I can where possible to make sure we don't get into any further trouble.
Do you have a second for the motion? Yeah. Just a second, councillor Cunney, just need to check the, the, I guess, the legality of that, because councils, we approved the budget, went on to exhibition, saw community feedback and approved that budget. And now to say to the staff, well, you choose what you don't want to do. I don't think we would have to identify, to make this motion valid, what projects you don't want to do. So you'd have to maybe just, happy to give you time if you want to start choosing.
Can we ask the legal solicitor we have on on our team?
Hmm, no, councillor, I chair the meeting. So if you, you've approved a capital works program that's been on public exhibition with a list of projects, if you want to pool projects, you need to, council needs to choose who pools those projects.
My only concern is we've, the, spoken about the cash reserves are very, very low, and we've allocated.
Sorry, can you define that statement, the cash reserves are low?
Well, it's all over the reports, the unrestricted cash reserves.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They're they're virtually at zero. Yes, we do have rate money coming in, but we've got 10 million that's outstanding. Whether they're collectible or not, I don't really know, to be honest with you. But personally, if I, I run an accounting firm, if it was up to me, I'd appoint a liquidator, because it's not very solvent at the moment. And what we're trying to do is become prudent in the way we spend ratepayers' money. And I think it's a prudent decision.
Councillor, just need to warn you about making derogatory comments about, about the staff.
I didn't. It was my personal opinion on on my experience in terms of numbers, not anyone personally.
With, the council's been audited, we've adopted audited financial reports. You have chief financial officer. And to say that we should be in liquidation, you know, you've you've basically saying that the chief financial officer, director of corporate, corporate support, and the auditors are incorrect in that you're right.
No, no, I'm concerned that we were budgeting for a $2 million surplus, and we delivered $11 million deficit. Now, we're, if you have a look at the reports, we're, it's all over the place. We're selling, we're not selling, oh, we made a decision about the reallocation costs. We're wrong. Now it's more than 2 million. So numbers are all over the place. And it's not personal. I'm just saying to you that it's quite legal what I'm writing. And there's nothing wrong with asking a person that's got experience here to determine whether point two is legal or not. And that's all I'm asking. I mean, we don't need to get into a, you know, a to-ing and throwing. The guy's just sitting behind me, we can simply ask the question.
So when you're referring to councillor staff, please refer to them by their titles.
Yeah, the director.
Uh, which director are you referring to?
General counsel.
Okay, so thank you. So the general counsel's job is to provide legal advice. It's my job to chair the meeting. And I'm telling you that we have adopted a budget with a list of capital works, right? That is our job as council, right? The staff do not have delegation to do that. We have to approve the budget. We have approved the budget, we put on exhibition. If you want to remove things from the budget from the capital works program, as per point two, you need to identify what they are.
What's wrong with asking him?
Because I chair the meeting. That's the difference.
It's not about it.
If you'd like, if you'd like the general counsel to come and sit in the chair and chair the meeting, that's, it doesn't kind of work like that, actually. All right?
We're elected here by the ratepayers. They would like us to utilise the
Hundred percent.
Professionals we have around us. And general counsel, I think, can ask the question. If you're right, then that's fine. If I'm right, then we move on. I mean, let's just ask the question.
I'm saying to you, as the chair of this meeting, as my job, because I'm not going to sit here and ask everything to the general counsel to come and chair the meeting. Because we will not be running efficient meetings if the general counsel has to go there and has to question everything that I can tell you what is right and what is wrong. So once again, councillor, please identify, if you'd like point two to continue on, identify what project you would like to remove.
Are you ruling my question to the general counsel out of order?
Um, am I ruling it out of order? Am I ruling, I'm ruling it, um, I don't believe, I need to make a ruling on it. It's basic, it's basic, it's basic principles. Ultimately, I can tell you what needs to go on there and not go on there. And it's a simple thing. If you want a report, if you ask me, how could we make? If you want a report, if you ask me how could we make that legal, you would say, get a report back from the CEO with recommendations of which projects to remove for council to make a decision on. That's would make your point two legal then and valid.
Can I just chime in here in respect of point two? Just noting what you said, Mr Mayor. Is it possible, would, would amending two to a position that would be, that the acting CEO is to delay the carryover works insofar that are funded by, funded from the general funds where possible until, until a report is received from the acting CEO about those projects to be able to identify which ones. Because the way I interpret point two is not that he's, not that councillor Restevsky is attempting to remove items or projects from the carryover works, but simply to delay them to a period of time to be able to, really just so for councils' cash position to improve. So that's my understanding of it.
Yeah, I guess so. Once again, you know, if you're talking about you have works that have to be done, that the community has told there is going to happen, right? So if you want to remove them, choose them. If you'd like a report, right, that which ones should be, that aren't, that maybe could be, that aren't important, for all are of lesser importance, you can ask the CEO to provide that at a future, at a future meeting. The decision has to come back to council. So to go and deferring them to the next financial year, so you've got a report in front of you that talks about the projects, what's in them, you know, I'm going to go through them one by one if you'd like to.
Mr Mayor, can I ask a question for some clarification as well?
Yes, council, if not.
Um, it's not, it doesn't appear to me to be as simple as just, as point two may, may allude to. There are some carryover works that are funded partially through general reserve and partially through grants. And so I'm also cognizant of the fact that if we don't deliver grant work within a certain period of time, that we can not, you know, not keep that, that money for that grant. So I think that it would be important to get a report back with recommendations because there may be time sensitive things which have a shared funding source that we need to be very mindful of before we just, you throw a blanket over it.
Just looking at the report, most of the ones funded out of general funds are not grants. Being a confidential report, I'm not going to read them out. But I'm happy to incorporate the suggestion that the mayor suggested earlier, just so we can speed this item up.
All right. So you'd like a point two, the CEO provided a report on what projects can be removed from the capital works programme, the twenty three, twenty four capital, twenty four, twenty five capital works programme?
Yeah, yeah.
Delayed?
Yeah.
Delayed till? Sorry, microphone.
Sorry, that's, that's my fault.
Delayed. And what do you consider the cash position improving? Is there a metric?
Well, I think if, once he gets the report to us, we can have a look at, because this is quite an extensive report and it is a confidential item. We can see which, he can make a recommendation, which ones can be delayed and which ones cannot. And based on that, we can go through it.
It's in, which one? We're talking about addendum operations zero six, included in addendum? Book six. Can I ask why is it confidential?
Why?
Hmm. Hmm. Doesn't say that really. I don't, I, yeah, I'll, I'll refer to the CEO, but I don't see what is confidential about it. Generally, I've received these in public numerous times as part of the normal agenda, but I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, the, the only challenge I can see to point two is to what extent you want the acting CEO to arbitrarily determine what projects can be delayed. Pushing projects to the right as we speak in project world is problematic in that we are saying, you're asking me to prioritise something from a fiscal position, which may not be what the community want. The, the second thing is, a lot of the carryovers, the works have been completed, but the, the invoices weren't paid, for example. So the funds were carried over. To the extent to which, when we carry over a project, the inter, the, the assumption was that I would build you A in a financial year and it would cost a hundred thousand dollars. And on the thirtieth of June, I, we could cut a ribbon and I've spent ninety nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and there's nothing carried over. In this instance, the project has continued past the financial year, it's moved into the next financial year. And we either haven't completed the works and there's still outstanding committed funds, or we have completed the work and we have an invoice for the committed funds.
If I can just respond to your answers, and I think they, they're good answers. I just think that in circumstances where projects are halfway done, almost done, we're committed to, and we've got to pay invoices, well, then getting a report on those would clearly take them to the, the top of the priority list. But for example, if something doesn't require to be, if something is not required to be built, commenced until later, then that would fall towards the latter end of the priority list. And therefore, as a result, can be delayed in terms of your recommendations of priority until the cash flow scenario, if I can put it that way, improves.
I, I don't think we have a, there is no cash flows issue, right? And ultimately, if you're cutting the capital works programme, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have an impact on the operational.
Can I just maybe ask a question that might get to the heart of all this? Money has been budgeted for this. There is money there for it. I think we're all getting a little bit confused about that. There is money there for these projects.
Correct.
They've been, so they've, they've been budgeted. It's, it's in the process. We have that money. Maybe, I think, I think that might allay some of the concerns of everyone here that the money is.
Hmm.
So I'm, yeah, I think we're going around in circles a bit here.
The, the, the. The main issue that we're overseeing here is, this has gone out to the community and I've seen the projects and the scopes that we're doing. Who are we to pull out these projects? If we're going to pull out anything, it needs to go back to the community. We can't just pull out projects because we feel like it's not right.
There, there's two, if I could answer, no, I need to speak to councillor Monahan's discussion point, which was correct. Understand this, in, in the carryover projects are committed funds and the projects have commenced. The future capital works programme is certainly a document where we, we, council could prioritise based on the community requirements and then reprioritise the capital works programme and perhaps push some of those projects that haven't started, which are budgeted, to the right and say, these are our priorities, for whatever reason, and I'm not citing any, any particular reason, these are the, these are the pri, are the priority projects which we can push to the right and push back twelve months. And that would clear up the allocate, the potentially allocated funds for those project.
Through, through the CEO, once again, we can't actually make that call forward to move or discuss these projects and say, these are the bucket that we have to change. We need to go back out to the community and ask them. Because there are people out there that actually have seen these projects and anticipated them. I've, I've actually spoken to constituents that are waiting for footpaths in Busby. So if you come to me today and say, oh, these footpaths aren't important, these people have been waiting for thirty years for these footpaths. You can't tell them today, oh, sorry, we can't do it for you. It's not, it's not our call. We need to go back to the community and say to them, this is what's being discussed.
Yep. Thank you, councillor McNaught.
Mr Mayor, I have a foreshadowed motion.
Yes, council, what is your foreshadowed motion?
As per the book.
I was just about to propose an amendment that we delete point two and adopt, adopt simply point one, which is per the book as well. So I think, I think, no, I won't go that far. I think, yeah, so they, the mover and the shaker might, might agree to that.
Yeah.
Look, I just want to clarify, no one's saying to stop. I'm just being prudent with, with, with monies. We're, we're spending, and I've seen the numbers, you, you, twenty twenty four, yes, we've got a surplus, we come back with eleven million dollar deficit. So I'm just being prudent. No one's saying to stop the projects. I'm just saying, keep an eye on the, the, the funds and, and prudently.
Yes, council, what's your point of order?
If we're saying that we're in a deficit of eleven million dollars, this, this council was in deficit in twelve million dollars for the year before that, when we came to council in twenty twenty two. So therefore, we're actually in a better position than we took over from council in the beginning year. No, no, I totally understand. But the point of order is, if we're going to keep on harping that we are in a deficit, as previously been told by the CFO or by the director for finance, the numbers that are there are showing us what's projected over the next few years. And that number fluctuates, depends on our spending.
I, I think to councillors, a moon point of order, it's about being factual with the numbers, which is, we are not in a million dollar, we are not in an eleven million dollar deficit, right? We're talking about for the, we're in the twenty four, twenty five budget.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is that, my, my point is this, it was budgeted to return a two million dollar surplus, surplus.
No, that, that's for this year.
I'm, I'm just, if you allow me to, to reason why numbers, you can't hang your hat on them. Twenty twenty four budget was a two million surplus, came back as eleven million dollar deficit. That's a massive difference.
Sorry, sorry, councillor, we did not budget, we did not budget in twenty, in twenty three, twenty four, we did not budget a surplus. In twenty four, twenty five.
Two million dollar deficit compared to eleven million dollars.
Twenty four, twenty five, we've budgeted a surplus. So we're talking about this financial year.
Well, we're in a eight million dollar deficit so far.
No, it was still.
We are, according to the numbers here.
Subject to what happens with the continuation of the budget, but yes.
Yeah, we're in an eight million dollar hole.
Yeah. Well, subject to what happens with the, the property sales, as was budgeted for. So.
That's been, that's on the agenda not to get, not to proceed. So that's going to put us into a, a deficit.
No, the council has not made that decision.
Well, it's on the agenda to, and recommended by, by, per the book.
If councillors don't want to, I'll get to one more. If it gets up to councillors, which way, what they decide. Councillor McNaught?
I'm just wondering if anyone wants to second my foreshadowed motion as per the book. Thank you.
Councillor Moon. Back to the point that councillor Monahan, you wanted to change point two to recommend the rest in the book or?
To delete point two if the mover and the second are.
The second, it can indicate he was happy with that? Is the mover happy with that? Okay, great. So I think that negates the need for the foreshadowed motion. Can, yep, thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is, oh, we've done committee zero five, presentations by councillors. No, okay, we'll move into, can we, can we have a, a five, six minute break, a six minute break before we get to, I'll, I'll call a recess to be seven thirty five exactly. Thank you. Which one, councillor? With Confor five, which? Yeah. Go off, go off of the, this run sheet. Okay, so the next item is nom zero one, the declared meeting resumed, defibrillators sporting fields, councillor Restevsky, page two thirty six, with a recommendation on page two thirty six.
I've just got an amended motion which they'll put up on the screen. We just wait for that. So from my discussions with defibrillator suppliers, the cost to install a defibrillator with a storage box and training is around three thousand dollars each. And that's completely covered by a government subsidy. So ultimately, there's no cost to rate payers. So that's why I'm suggesting we go to an expression of interest to suppliers to see what they come back with and confirming what I've just said as well.
Yep. Do you have a second there? Deputy mayor?
I just would like to check on, with regards to what you said councillor Restevsky, doing it, we're doing an EOI, so we're not calling. So the, who, so council's doing the EOI. To, who are we doing it to?
To suppliers of defibrillators to, obviously, to install, train, our supporting facilities are leased out to various groups. So they will then apply for the grant in their name to completely cover the cost of the defibrillators.
All right. Maybe, do you want to just, if I can refer the CEO, happy, we just got to get, just to get the right wording between, before the CEO, councillor McNaught?
I've got a couple of questions. I'm just, you know, just to draw the attention to the fact that the grant closes on the twenty seventh of November, which is tomorrow. And that's referred to in the report. I'm absolutely one hundred percent supportive of a motion like this. I'm just very wary of the, the wording of the background to this motion. And I, without it being referenced, I'd, I'd like the statement to either be referenced or it to be clear that that is a personal opinion of the author of the motion.
Which, which exactly part are you referring to? Just?
Mr Mayor, it says post-COVID, there has been a significant increase in cardiovascular incidents whilst playing on sporting fields. More than happy to acknowledge that there is an, that cardiovascular events happen on sporting fields. I'm just not comfortable with the way that it reads without being referenced when, when we're putting timeframes.
Yeah. So I think your point is that, you, where, where is that established as a fact? And how are we saying it that it's?
Yeah, if it's a fact, it needs to be referenced. And if it's an opinion, it just needs to be highlighted that that's the opinion of the author of the motion, which is fine. Which means that when we vote for the motion, we're all aware that that is an opinion of the author, which is fine.
Yep. So I think, I think you've just turned around and just said, I think, I think the point is be, we're a council, we just have to be mindful of what we're, what we're saying. Um. Yeah. Okay.
I've got a question.
Councillor Hart, yes.
Um, councillor Restevsky, through the mayor, I've just got a question. Just with the funding of the installation of the defibrillators, is it supposed to be through the local sport defibrillator programme?
Oh, sorry. Through the chair, yes, there are other grants, even though there's this one here that expires or runs out tomorrow. There are multiple ones proceeding. And I've been speaking to a few of the suppliers of these defibrillators and they're quite comfortable to put in their expressions of interest to show that, show how it can work in terms of zero cost to the rate payers.
Um, yeah, I just want to advise you that the funding for the twenty, twenty four, twenty five local sport defibrillator grant programme has exhausted and it's now closed. So that is probably not the best way of going ahead with the grant because, well, it closes tomorrow as well.
Sorry, I'm not too sure what the grant is called, but there are other ones besides that one. I was hoping that they'll speak at tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, I didn't remember to tell him to put his motion in to speak. I didn't realise that he can speak. But I.
Sorry, who's, who you're referring to?
A couple of suppliers that have told me what I've just clarified would have been good for them to speak. But in terms of the expressions of interest, that they'll clarify all of that. And, and that's why I'm calling for an expression of interest rather than the tender process.
So perhaps can we ask for an audit of each sporting field if they do and don't have a defibrillator? Because I know, for example, I'm referring back to this example of the local sport defibrillator grant programme. I know that it, the eligibility criteria was based off socio-economic conditions in a specific postcode. And I'm pretty sure two one seven three, which covers Wattle Grove, was not included in that grant programme. So I think, you know, I think if we had a, an audit done for the parks that are in Wattle Grove as an example, to make sure they do have a defibrillator, because we obviously don't want anyone. To make sure they do have a defibrillator because we obviously don't want anyone to miss out.
Uh, through the chair, um, if I can refer that. I call you Craig, so um we were having a chat about that earlier, he was giving me some numbers if you want to clarify.
The the uh, through the CEO to the relevant manager would probably be the appropriate way. Uh, feel free to take them out, but I just think whilst um. Well, it's been done. Yeah, can I guess, wh- wh- whilst you're added, whilst we're looking at this, and you see this more and more, um, diffibrillators just generally in public buildings. Um, you know, we probably should not just keep it to sporting fields, I know whilst we're doing this, might as well do it properly and.
Do we have um defibrillators in all council facilities?
I wouldn't.
Yes. Yes.
Um, sorry, I refer.
If we don't, if we don't have one, I've got one in my car, so.
I'll refer to the uh. Uh, through the CEO, to the act, to the relevant director, if I can, I think she.
Uh, through the CEO, there was an audit conducted by the team in April in anticipation of this grant. So Craig Lambeth, my manager, recreation and community outcomes, has that data if you require it. Uh, and the outcome, there's a summary of this in in the report. Yes, so there's twenty nine units required is my understanding, so uh if you wish to proceed.
All right. If the CEO is happy with that wording, if that can work or it's a bit, all right.
Couldn't the um motion read that council go to an expression of interest for the installation of defibrillators at every sporting field which does not have one?
We can, then we're just, the funding issue.
Audit has already been done, so it's identified which ones do and do not have them. Um, and then the funding uh issue is it's an expression of interest um process. It comes back here as to a report to council for for funding, so I.
I'm happy to if we can work that way or.
Yes, through the chair, uh perhaps the most efficient way. If we removed the word cost and put opportunity. A report to come back to next council meeting on the opportunity to incorporate the philip, defibrillators at council sporting fields. That would give us the opportunity to talk about not only the cost, but some of the grants and how these things are actually.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you, CEO, but we're um councillor Restevsky has actually moved. Well, he's moved what's below, which is, so point one and two aren't relevant anymore. So we're starting from what's below there.
Through through the chair, uh, the cost is is unbudgeted for, but it's already contained in the response. So the across is the total forty nine thousand three hundred, that's already the cost it's, we've anticipated if council were to fund it. And what we've noted is that there is no current budget for for the defibrillators. However, we've got the total amount, so what the team have been doing is working with the local sporting clubs to apply for the grant. But not all of them have undertaken that process.
So given we, um, the audit was done in April.
Right.
Um, uh, and the latest gra, uh, the latest round of the uh local sport defibrillator grant program closed. Um, I I I'm not sure whether we should assign a budget, a specific budget to this. Because there might have been clubs in the meantime between April and today that have received funding for um a defibrillator. So I think we might need to go back out to make sure we're not doubling up because that's just a waste of money.
Which I I think that would be, uh, through the mayor to councillor Hart, wouldn't that not be covered if we amended the motion? And with subject, of course, to the mover and the seconders um uh agreement. That we install or go to an expression of interest for the installation of defibrillators at every sporting field which does not have one. So I mean, as as the the current grant uh that closes tomorrow is completed and those who are successful. Um, in receiving a grant for a defibrillator, I'm sure that will no doubt uh come, become public uh information. Then the uh list uh that the director has, the audit that has already been prepared will be updated in due course. If I can ask that also as a as a question.
Yeah, well, let me, if I can just refer to the CEO. Thank you, through the chair, I'm just going to refer quickly to the general counsel, just some advice about how this motion is being designed.
Sorry, if I, yes, if I may, so the current motion is to to go to an expression of interest. If if we have an estimate of what the cost of installation is. What we would do if there is a budget is to request quotations. And we'd make a decision based on what we receive back. The the expression of interest process. If used in the context of tendering a contract. It is normally to develop a, it's a two stage process, it's to develop a shortlist from which we subsequently do tenders. Or it's to narrow down the number from which we then go into, so so it's kind of a very particular process. I I think when we're dealing with a contract of this size, which is less than, I think it's less than fifty thousand dollars.
Hmm.
We'd just be requesting quotations.
Should have had a coffee during the break, so I hope, so my mind's not functioning the best, where's?
Can I make a suggestion um in terms of allocation, because we don't know who's received the grant? We say allocate up to the amount that was requested, but we won't exhaust it. Once we understand who's been successful with the grant, but they'll allow us to proceed.
So if we can do some wording, so where says that council? Um, sorry councillor Monahan, what are they called again? The double dots, I forgot.
Double, double dots is a colon.
Colon, not semicolon.
Semicolon has the comma, yes.
All right, thank you, colon. So point one, that we go to an expressive interest for the defibrillators? Huh? I'll remember it, I'll remember. Um, the go to an ex, so yeah, basically, you you don't have to write it again, but I think if you say council, go to an expression of interest in every sporting field that does not have one. Then we, I think, cut off from there. Keep that, does not have one, yep, great. Let's do a point two, put all that down to a point two. Do we need another point two?
No.
Just keep it a point one, would that be, would everyone be happy with that? I'm just, I'm more worried if the staff are happy with dealing with section, the relevant section of the act with regards to tendering.
Uh, only to the extent that. We may change the words on the general counsel's advice. To a quote rather than expression of interest.
Request for quote then, express rather than E O I, R F Q.
Through the chair, we'll need an allocated budget though.
Yep. And councillor Restevsky, is your intention that? If there is no grant. That council funds them? Microphone please.
If there is no grant, let's come back to council for a further decision.
Yep. Yep, I, I think that's workable, um. Two can go out. Well, if if the grant program has closed, unless there is another grant program that's around. Is there another grant program, if anyone knows of it?
Through, through the chair, I think the motion should read that. Identify grant or find the grant through.
Yeah.
The state government or federal government that we can provide with, then we can follow the other steps. Because at the moment, we're going out and asking for um. Quotes or whatever you want to say, but we don't actually, we haven't secured the money. So first, let's secure the money through a grant. So council identifies a grant. Where funding is possible.
Can I ask a question, I'm sorry. Just want to ask a question of the mover before we, before we do that. I thought that that the um, that you, through your undertakings with suppliers, knew that there were some other grants, yeah? So I think that will get teased out in the whole process, I think it's covered because. Yeah, because if the, and then what you're saying, and I don't want to paraphrase, is that if there is no grant available, then it'll come back to us for another decision. Yeah, I think that'll tease out in the process of that that um point two that we had, the original point two, which is now point three.
I just didn't want it to go out and get all the quotes and get ready for it and then there's no funding, that's the issue.
Then then it will come, i- i- if there's, if there's, you know, quotes and then there's um grants available through the people who the councillor has had dealings with to to get that information. And if then anyone who doesn't get captured in that, it will come back to us for another decision.
Yeah, and and, I'm sorry, ultimately, if I were to say that if there were no grants. Um, I think that we would put on ourselves to find fifty thousand dollars to roll them out, I think that's a bare minimum.
Hundred percent, but I think that we should go through those, the step of trying to identify it first.
I I missed a a bit of that discussion, sorry, um, the. Does, is that now covered in points one, two and three, four?
I just don't think we need point one, I thought that 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 could go out, we don't need to have it there because the original point one and point two. We, the, now the one that reads point three. Actually encapsulates that number one there anyway, you know, for people to work with the hires of the sports grounds. These are the people who are on the ground, who know about defibrillator installations and they know what grants are around. So they're going to work with our people to try and find a grant for them and if they can't, then it'll come back to us.
Are you happy to remove point one councillor Restevsky? Yes, okay, so if we remove point one, is second are happy with that, deputy mayor? Great, is everyone else happy with point one, two and three? No? Yes, great, okay, if there's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declared unanimous. NOM zero two, page two thirty eight, recommend, um, the recommendation on page two thirty eight, councillor Restevsky.
Uh, yes, I I move that way.
Yeah, uh, would you, um, I'm happy to second, but would you uh consider if we make it to um all the streets in Liverpool? Rather than just the streets identified?
Um, well, it it's difficult to know what what it will cost, so this is probably a good pilot project.
Well, I guess really, yeah, sorry, and we do need to understand, do we have an idea of? Of the lost income that council would um. Would get in those meters? Because that will have an impact on the budget and we do need to know that.
We can do some modelling, so the two impacts are that. People using the car spot do not pay anymore. And the second impact is that people who were using the spot and had been an expired parking spot don't get fined anymore. So there's the revenue loss from, the smaller revenue loss from the hourly parking rate. And the larger revenue loss from the people who e- expire their parking and get fined by a compliance officer. So we would have to model those two, we could, it is not a hard model. It is simply looking at the last three years of data evidence on what was collected. Via the mark parking feeder meter and what wa- what was collected by revenue agents on that street within the same period timeframe. And we think that would be a matter of weeks, but next council meeting, we think that would be an easy.
Yep.
Um.
So I I I think we'd have to get that, we'd have to get the report before we can implement it. No, we we can just um. We're moving to get a report, yeah. That council get a report. I think if you just, 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 if you got a, yeah, the council.
Mo- mo- modeling.
Yeah, just will receive a report on the above. The financial, the financial, uh. The financial modeling on the above, receiver on the financial modeling of the above.
And can we make sure that it's for, we've got two situations where it's just for George Street and then one for all of the CBD?
We, yes, we could do that, as long as the model's like for like. The only other caution for council is that we have forward projection in budget in relation to compliance revenue. That would be impacted by your wonderful potential favour to the driving community.
I don't think the parking inspectors worked after four P M, but anyway. They don't, no?
Well, I feel like if we, if we get that modeling for just one street and then the entire CBD, then that can give us the the gravity of, or the quantum of how much it's going to cost council.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to the officers to define the CBD to say that the the typical streets in that block. And we'll give you both the revenue income from the parking meter and the revenue income from the compliance.
Great. Councillor Carnib?
Yeah, just a very brief question on the comments of the acting CEO around. Um, and your comments, Mr. Mayor, around the fact that um whether parking ranges work from four P M. It's it's, it's really a side question, but just for abundant clarity that we're all hearing this. Would there be a breakdown of in fact how many infringements and to what quantum from four P M? I- i- the reason I ask is only because, look, I'm I'm all for this in in many facets. Because if people are being fined during those periods, I think they're more likely to be be able to spend that money rather than on an infringement notice. But rather on on small businesses in Liverpool. So whilst it may not assist the council from a budget perspective, I think it, I think it assists the community being just standard constituents and of course, small businesses that they that they visit. So I guess if it's really not, the question around whether or not we we receive quantums and monies from infringements between four and six. If we're not really receiving them, then it's not really an issue. And the question is really, do we track that and do, do we do it by hour?
Yeah, yeah, the metrics are tracked by hour, we can, we can drive down to that. And then to the extent that obviously it's in relation to compliance, it is when the end of the ranges shift. There's no other compliance other than the ranges doing that. Uh, and then the other question for council is um. Um. Is parity, parking parity. So would we saying that you're you're on a free run in the city and then to what extent does that encourage people to sit there all day? Uh, and that does the shop, then do the shop owners get less foot traffic because the same car is sitting there all day? So a a lot of variables, but let's do the modeling on the pure numbers and.
I'm sorry, I just had one, one very brief question. It was my understanding that Liverpool council operated an after hours ranger service. But if the mayor says that they clock off at.
Parking.
Oh, parking, specifically parking.
Is different, yes.
Right, okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and I think, is it today, I think is the first day or they've just reintroduced the ticket? Uh, what's the descrip- description of it? No longer ticketless.
Uh, that through the C, through the acting CEO, it um is still ticketless. And the bill has been passed, but we're waiting to find out when the act comes into play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was, for those councillors who don't know, there was an incident, I think probably five years ago, six years ago. Where there was a parking ranger was assaulted for issuing a parking fine. And then, which I think led to us going paperless, I was, yeah. So anyway, that's um, that is, um. And it's just to your point as well councillor Carnib, I think it's a very important point. Um, unless you're going to Westfields, um, put aside street parking, because street parking is meant to turn people over. But uh the Northumberland Street Car Park and the Bathurst Street Park work off of a a ticket. So if you're a shopper, uh, we'll just put it this way, imagine you're in Westfields and you had to predict how long you were going to stay there for, pay for it upfront. And then if you were to overstay that, you would get fined. Versus the model that you, that what that does to your shopping habits where if you're, the shopping centre wants you to stay there, wants you to spend money and then when you leave, you pay how much you're there for. So I think um we're looking, another E O I for the car parks has just gone out, but I think changing how those car parks operate to. Spend time there and then pay when you leave, so you don't have an option, you will not get fined if you stay for a longer period, is something that we need to look at. And I think that will change, that will improve the spending habits and behaviour and make CBD a CBD better place if we were to do that. But that's another, another story, another story for another discussion. Like, because you're exactly right, you don't want people getting fined if they're out here spending money, you'd rather that money be spent into a shop. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Unanimous? Good. Declare carried. Next item is NOM zero three, page two forty with the with the recommendation on page. Two hundred and forty.
I've amended my motion, um, which will come up shortly.
Just for reference, I don't think, or what's proposed in the book, I think could just been answered with. Questions, because I think we got all this in reports to us prior. To the election on most of the points. To the election on most of the points. Is this the?
Alternative motion? Yeah, alternate motion. Oh, okay. Yeah, here we go.
So what's the difference? Can we just go up, please? Just with respect to point two, making the price public. I know it gets updated on R P data, but are we there yet for that to happen?
Agnostic. It'll come up when it comes up. It's a publicly, it's a public sale.
Yeah, but I think, sorry, the microphone, I think this is saying, this is saying that it comes up at the next council meeting. That's gonna be, there's no issues with putting it public?
No.
Just saying that the, because the, I'm I'm assuming they haven't settled as of yet. And normally, R P data, which makes it public, does get updated on settlement. If there's any implications of making it public now. Which is, I think, is a month or two early than when it would be made. And also, I have no issue with making it public, but I just want to understand. Yeah.
Nothing comes immediately to mind, Mr Mayor. We we have exchanged contracts, it's binding.
Yeah.
We haven't settled yet. That won't happen until certain conditions precedent are met. Can I, can I give that some more thought and come back to councillors about that question of whether there is any issue with making the sale price known? I I would need to just, yeah, I just need to do a little bit more.
Well, yeah, we can still adopt it and you can, if it's possible, it's possible.
Look, I'm happy just to um to make it public when it settles, maybe just change it to that.
Mm hmm.
Do we have a second up?
Yeah, second to councillor Carnaby. The. Can we, can we add on to that one? Um, and also the value, the valuations as well? Councillors be happy with the movement, second be happy with that as well? Yep, yep, okay, yeah.
Including latest valuation.
Yep, cool. What's three? Yep, CEO happy to answer three now.
So in short on number three, um, no, it wasn't open to public tender, it was a sole source. And it wasn't exactly along I C A T guidelines. And that's why I delayed it for nearly six months to make sure we could retrofit. Our policy and approach, satisfy the A R I C, satisfy council, that we were. As close as possible to the very guidelines that we weren't exactly adherent to. I should say though, and no, um, no comment uh in relation to the the former CEO, the only real. Um, lack of clarity was the recording of rationale, you know, dotting I's and crossing T's, not. In any material aspect of the contractual sale.
Um. Can you just clarify with regards to what you mean by point five, councillor Restovski?
Okay, um, I'm just trying to maximise um the current uh Holsworthy pool that we have, uh. I don't know if I can, I know what we're getting rented per year, is that confidential if I say it or?
It's a public lease, I think the lease is red, the lease is registered, so.
Yeah, so we we're roughly getting around uh sixty thousand dollars, which I think we're not maximising, um. And what I meant by controlled entity was, um, we could probably. You're setting up another entity owned by council to run that business, um, and you can probably generate. You know, from my numbers and what I know about pools and how to swim classes and whatnot, probably around half a million dollars after depreciation. Now, remember the current operator. Um, doesn't have any depreciation factored in there, so if we take that out, you're probably looking at around the profit, non cash profit of around eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, which would be great to receive in today's current fiscal climate. Um, based on the report of Holsworthy Pool, I think there's around two and a half thousand kids. Um, and, you know, and a learnt to swim programme, it generates around two million dollars in revenue um for the operators, so. Um, I know personally it's a very profitable business, learnt to swim, um, I've got family officers I look after and they're investing in it heavily. Um, in relation to the current operator, obviously, uh, my point five is going to take some time to implement. And it's probably in in the best interest if we just give them a short term lease, um, until we get our ducks in order.
Yep, councillor McNaul?
Um, I have a question and a point of order. Um, so. My question first is, um, in regards to point one in the motion, is that we went out to extensive community consultation. And um part of that consultation, I'm certain, described where the funds from the land sale would go, so I don't know. How we change that without going back out to the community. And my point of order relates to the preamble to the motion again. Um, if we can move it up.
Move it back up, please.
Just the first line again is an opinion of the author. And it may, well, I think it does bring council into disrepute if it stays the way that it is, because this is a public published document and that's an opinion of the author.
Yeah, I have to agree with councillor McNaul. Because.
I'm I'm happy for it to be removed, there's no issue.
The first line, thank you, of the preamble, the first, the first two lines here, thank you.
Um, with regards, with regards to um the preamble as well, um, point four, I can clarify that for you, councillor Restovski, through the mayor. Um, no, the Liberal Party did not take any political donations from Moorbank Sports Club, so we will remove that.
But.
And also, I just wanted to um ask councillor Restovski through the mayor, is this, uh, the, the this motion. Um, indicates a significant redirection in um the vision. Um, of uh, of of the project that's been proposed at Moorbank um Sporties to build an aquatics and leisure centre there. Um, you know, is are you against building a new pool there? I just want to clarify.
Given our budgetary constraints, most definitely. Um, we're struggling even with the Calthill. Pool and um there's been a lot of opposition to to that. Um, my motion simply talks about uh what it will cost to upgrade the pool, so we can actually. Make an educated decision on the direction we, the new council shall take. Um, decision made by the previous council, so be it, but we've got a new council and I'd like to know what. The existing facility will cost to upgrade in comparison to spending, from what I'm reading in the media, sixty million dollars on a. On a, or fifty million dollars on a twenty five metre pool, which is two million dollars a metre, literally. Um, so I'd like to see what, you know, what it will cost to upgrade in comparison to establishing a new one, so. That's the whole objective of my motion.
Sure, and um I've just got one more question, maybe we can make a bit of a change here, councillor Restovski through the mayor. Um, uh, point five is a significant departure on how we generally operate aquatic centres at Liverpool City Council, given that's. Run through a private operator. Um, are we able to perhaps uh change point five? Um, to uh perhaps, um, maybe a a report to come back on. Um, the viability of a controlled entity to run the facility, because you've, point five is currently. Um, an action to establish it and then a report. Can we get a report first before we, you know. Uh, change our policy in terms of operating that aquatic centre?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
So if we can, is the second are happy with that? So there would be, you'd remove point five, that council receive a report. On establishing a controlled entity. To run the facility?
I've got a question as well.
Yep.
Um, when does the current contract expire for the current operators of the Holsworthy Aquatic Centre?
Refer that to the CEO.
Thank you, through the chair, um, refer that to the director of City Futures.
Thank you, acting CEO, and um I share this responsibility with Craig Lambeth, who was here earlier and um. Mr Tindobaner's director as well with the commercial property team. Uh, just for background, the previous council was briefed. I can't recall if it was governance or whether it was a briefing session, but there was a briefing session on the situation with the um, the swimming pool at um. At uh, sorry, um, Holsworthy, thank you, Holsworthy, uh, in regards to the fact that uh the um. We couldn't extend the current uh lease situation legally, and I'll happy to have a legal counsel give us clarify that if that's my correct interpretation of the time. And significant investment needed to upgrade the swimming pool at this point in time. So right now we're in the process of finalising the tender. Uh, process for applicants to go to market, to apply, to uh take the pool on, um, with a. Uh, anticipated expectation that 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 whoever is successful will be contributing to the capital works to upgrade that pool on behalf of council. Um, so that's where it's at at the moment, just so you can see that background. Ju- just the other point I want to make is that um the reports. The reports I went to the previous council, uh, under my signature regarding this whole process of the sale and and so forth. Are available for, as it says in the minutes here, the notes here, available for councillors who weren't at in the last council to come and inspect, which addresses some of those questions. Um, what does that say? Yeah, and and I think Craig Lambeth would be, if he was, he would be able to give you a lot more information in regards to the capacity of the current pool. I'm not an expert on how many kids consume in a pool, but it is. Old pool, I believe we inherited it from the army, uh, and it's probably past its best use.
Close, I think it's close to fifty years old.
Yeah, that's right.
Councillor Hart?
So, sorry, um, uh, I just wanted to know, when does the actual contract end for the current operators? Is there a set date?
I might need to take that on notice, but I do think it has actually already ended and we're in in a period, but I will take that on notice. I do know that we're advised that it could not be extended in a, like a, a fixed period of time. We're now in the process of doing a market, market testing per the legislation.
Yeah, that that's correct. So the current lease, I think, has expired and the conditions of the lease allow the operator to remain. In situ until such time as a new lease is expired. One of the great things about going to tender to the market. Is that we're highly likely to get, say, three participants, which will give us a three point estimate on what it actually is worth. For en- for entity A to run the business. That gives council a very good um guide, that is, if a private entity can. Um, can run the business at A, B and C, then how can council compete or not compete?
Councillor Hart?
So just to um jump back on to what councillor McNaul mentioned earlier with point one on the motion. Um, are there any, if we have concerns about whether we have to go back to um public consultation? To change um where the money lands in the bank account, um, to unrestricted general reserves? Um, can we um perhaps request a report back on whether we have to go back to the community or not?
Yeah, and there's another point to that, that the council resolved that um in uh in August, and that would have to be rescinded, that point. Um, and then put back up, you'd have to, you'd have to rescind that point from the motion and then re-put it, re-put it back up from the original motion. Because it is a significant change uh to what's going on. Is the mover and second are memorable? Yeah, and we'd have, yeah, yeah, and there is, and there is an obligation if that you would, that you would go back out to the community, considering they were asked. There was a, a significant, an extensive process that council went through, uh, letters, flashing signs, um. And I think, and I, yeah, and just to kind of change that now, I think it would be a bit challen- uh. It would not be best practice to do that.
I I think this is about opportunity cost, right? Um, you know, uh, councillor Restovski through the mayor, there there's been a few motions, this council meeting, last council meeting, where. Um, uh, you want to redirect funding from uh an another source. Um, and I think, you know, um, if we're talking about opportunity cost here is, if we're going to take money away from. Uh, the general reserves, where is it going to go? So I think we need to um get a report back as to whether we can proceed with that, um, as is.
Yeah, so I think your point is to, you receive a report on how to redirect the funds and what public, what. Community consultation would have to take place, is that what you're? Am I understanding you correctly? Is that what you're, councillor Hart? Yeah, but I'm just speaking before I ask them. Yep, councillor Carnaby?
Look, I I just want councillor Hart to just to clarify that piece, because the way I understood part one to read was that the proceeds from the sale. To the unrestricted general funds reserve as opposed to, I I I may have misunderstood him like you, Mr Mayor, so if you can just clarify what he meant by one, I just want to understand it a little bit more.
Yeah, I guess what he's getting at, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor Hart, is that, so there was a significant public consultation process. Uh, with regards to master plan and then specifically about the sale. And the sale was said that the funds will go into. If we're selling that block of land, the funds will go back into that facility. So there was a very big consultation processes going on. So he's saying, well, if you're not going to say, hey, guys, we told you this, but now we're doing something different. You know, you you would want to go back on a consultation.
Yeah.
Consultation process.
I I don't, I don't disagree with that, with that position. If the community was consulted and and money is to be redirected into. General reserves, for example, then of course they should be consulted, but I think the intent of councillor Hart's comments about councillor Restovski redirecting funds, this is really just. My understanding, because I was a second to the motion, was to move the funds into general reserve, really just to reestablish. A position of 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 really solidarity in that position. That's the way I understood the motion, so I just want to clarify my particular position on it and I I I'm sure that may be the position of the mover. So just to understand where that came from, but yes, I agree with going at the public consultation on that issue, because if we're. Spending the money elsewhere than what we initially said, then then of course, let's receive a report on it, yeah.
And is the mover happy with that as well? Yes. Microphone, please, yep.
Yep. Sorry, uh, what I meant, sorry, was, you know, if we're going to take X amount of money away from. Uh, the construction of a new aquatic centre, which is what this money's been set aside for, then that obviously that's an opportunity cost where that money's going to go instead.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, question.
Deputy Mayor, yes.
On, on um point six. The viability of a controlled entity to run the facility. Is, is that the only way? From my conversations, I understand that there are, there are more, there is more than one possibility. Rather than have a controlled entity, I would have thought that it's in our best interests to make sure that whatever we do, we get the maximum return for that. And that may mean, it could in fact include, council operates it, then we may make more that way. Uh, I think there should be more than just a controlled entity. I think we should be looking at the best possible way of utilizing that for maximum income. That's just my point of view. I don't know if that covers that.
Thank you for the question, councillor Hall. I'll refer you to comp six, and it talks about revenue streams.
So I think, um, uh. Or, so I think if we add the words after the controlled entity. Or council to run the facility. No, controlled entity is a separate, my understanding is controlled entity is a separate entity owned by council, running it?
We're we're still running it, uh, um, I think what Peter Hall wants to look at is maybe if we upgrade it, what we could. Get in return, um, in addition to the controlled entity, so look at all options, is that what you, yeah.
Yeah, so controlled controlled entity is a, a company owned by council versus a council employees, that's what. I'm seeing that is. So you're saying is just not a controlled entity, whether council runs it as well?
Oh, even separately, what what's wrong with the, with the current operator running it and providing, at the moment, you're saying it's what, sixty thousand dollars? To me, that's a pittance compared to what you're saying you can get. So why are we limiting? So why are we limiting ourselves to that?
Yeah, well, I think councillor Hall, we know the history from, remember 10 years ago, regarding this lease? Yep, so, so then therefore, okay, so you want to remove the word council, or you want to keep it like that?
What have we just said, and, and other best uses?
Okay, control, controlled entity, so remove the word council, or best value for money, proposition. Okay, secondor, mover and secondor happy with that? Great, any further discussion?
Mr Mayor, I think point three is already being addressed by the acting CEO, so I don't see a reason for it to be there.
The mover wants, secondor happy, great. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against a declared carried. Next item is nom 04. Request for section 430 briefing, where is it? Page 242, with a recommendation on page 242, councillor Green? Move councillor Green, secondor councillor Moon, would like to speak for your motion?
Sure. I think, given that we have a new council, and new councillors, for everybody to be on the same page and to understand, have a full understanding and be fully informed for the Office for Local Government to provide a confidential briefing on the 430, section 430 inquiry could be most beneficial, then everybody has got the same information. So it's for consistency.
Cool, councillor Hart?
I hate to be a stickler, but isn't it section 438 for public inquiry? 430 was the investigation, 438's public inquiry.
So there are two, section 430 is the one where an interim report was delivered, that was subsequently, you know, found to be illegally invalid, not invalid in substance. So that inquiry is still on foot, it has not finally reported, so 430 is correct. I'd also, with the indulgence of the mover and the secondor, ask that a second point be added, so that we, council is provided with, I'll use the exact wording, an urgent confidential briefing on the section 438, capital U, inquiry.
So it's a nice, a good timing councillor, thank you for that. I sat with the general counsel today, who I'll shortly revert to, but the section 430 investigation is still on foot and will continue to be on foot through the section 438 inquiry. And I'll go to the general counsel just to confirm our discussions this very date on that, and the only other point I would make, within point three at the moment, whether you have a confidential briefing on a public inquiry. Because the briefing you're after is to, I would assume council is to process, and which we can certainly facilitate, but I will refer just to the general counsel for his interpretation of the 430 and the 438.
I'm not sure I've got a lot to add, so I would change the word inquiry in number one to investigation, so I think that's what it is. And we can, we can make the request and see what comes back?
I've got a question through the CEO, probably for the general counsel. So what undertake, undertakings have occurred by the Office of Local Government and their investigators with respect to the section 430 investigation since the interim report was handed down?
Thank you councillor Hart, again, is very timely, that is the exact question that was discussed between the general counsel and myself today, and the answer is nothing. So, once the investig, if the investigation is on foot, the OLG have not, to our knowledge, kept investigation inquiries going, subpoenaed any documents, asked for any space like they had before, we have heard nothing since the 438 has been announced as to the progress of the 430.
So, to councillor Monahan's point, it would be great to get an update on the section 430 investigation, and can, just can we just clean it up and just make it all point one, just on the section 430 and section 438 U inquiry, investigation and section 438 U inquiry?
I'd take the acting CEO's comment on board, and he's quite right, it would be nonsensical to have a confidential briefing into a public inquiry, you're quite right, and that should be in public. I would, again, with the indulgence of the mover and secondor, have that kept as a second point, and say that it is provided with an urgent briefing on the section 438, capital U, inquiry.
And we will write, we've been in correspondence with the OLG, so we'll write to commissioner Glover and ask for that to occur.
I do have a question, have any briefings in respect of the section 430 investigation and/or the section 438, capital U, inquiry, since the new council was sworn in, been provided to anyone amongst the executive leadership team?
Yes, so the executive leadership team with the additions of the head of people and the general counsel met in relation to our insured position initially, so we're now, we have insurance in relation to legal counsel, which we have, which we've articulated to both councillors and staff. The, the second meeting was on receipt of a letter from commissioner Glover some two weeks ago, which highlighted an alleged, the way we worded our Q and A on our website, there was a suggestion, and the commissioner quite rightly acknowledged it was not with any intent, that that may have dissuaded, opposite of persuaded, people from coming forward to the public inquiry, which the public submissions finish on the 16th of December, and the commissioner asked me to write again to the staff, encouraging them, as we always have in any forum, to present anything they wanted to the public inquiry. The other thing is, of course, I think our lawyers have, but changed names, but still were insured, and what we'll have is a situation where we will have councillors and council staff, if they wish, will have access to that legal team in situ here in Civic Place as we move forward. So they're the two briefings that we've had.
Sorry, I just, just to clarify, can we make point two, put it into point one, so we make sure the Office of Local Government give us that urgent briefing? Just being a bit technical, but want to make sure we're prim and proper. So, write as soon as practicable to the Office of Local Government to request an urgent confidential briefing on the S430 investigation and S438U inquiry?
From the OLG?
From, yeah, well, yeah.
That's it. Yeah, then to move to, could be removed then? Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, got it. I think it's not, you know, the intent of this is that, you know, we are fully informed and have the information, all the information together, so I'm, I don't have a problem with it being together. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to raise one thing, that now reads as though the briefing will be confidential in respect to both investigations, so it really should read that council write one, to the Office of Local Government to request an urgent confidential briefing on the 430 investigation, and two, request an urgent briefing on the 438, capital U, inquiry, because that one should, as the acting CEO pointed out, it, it, it's illogical that, that that would be held behind closed doors whilst the inquiry is, is called a public inquiry. The points should, so that, so at the top, it should be that council, right, and then one.
Yep, so if you go back up to the top, that council right?
Right, yes, and then delete right from...
Yep.
Yes.
Right, colon, as soon as practicable to the office?
Yes.
You can pretty much copy and, copy and paste that, as point two as well, so copy and paste point one, put it as point two.
Mm-hmm. And delete confidential.
CEO?
Yes, that, that reads better.
Okay, I understand now.
Yeah.
No, they're running concurrently.
Are they?
That's what, oh, sorry.
I just want to curb council's anticipation on one, because you're asking for a confidential briefing on a, on the investigation on foot. So what is your expectation on that briefing? If you're after details of the investigation, the very, the very act prohibits the release of that information?
Councillor Hart?
I think it will be good to know, as I said, and you, you got that clarification today, acting CEO, what undertakings they've completed since the interim report, and you know what, I think it is a good question to ask, why do you still have a section 430 investigation if you're not doing anything with it?
So is the issue with the confidentiality, or? Or more so just concept?
Expectations of council as to what an OLG representative would tell you about a confidential investigation into the very council that you represent.
I, I think it's, it would be good to know what they're doing, because, once again, I don't see the point of having a section 430 investigation when nothing's been undertaken, and it would be good to get that clarification from the Office of Local Government, so we can ask the question as a council, why are we being investigated when, well, a so-called investigation when there's actually no investigation?
All right, yeah, I guess whatever response we get, we get, is the...
You happy with that?
Is everyone happy?
Councillor Green?
All right, I'll put the motion, if there's no further discussion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimously. Okay. Sorry, just want to refresh my memory as we move into the next item. I'm not sure what I declared, because we've had, what we've declared an interest in, in this meeting? Do we, do we declare, did anybody declare interest?
Councillor Green?
On conf 04, for the awards. Yep, okay, we'll get there. Councillor Hall did, no, we're not there yet, we're not there yet, I'm just making sure, did anyone else? Only those two? All right. I just want to go... I'm just going to make sure. All right, I don't see any issues. All right, cool. All right, we don't have to go on to closed session unless somebody wants to bring something in particular, and the subject what they want to bring up, just remind council of that. Next item is conf 03, Legal Affairs Report, page 759, in confidential booklet three.
Got a question, item 50, or court case number 50, whatever it's called, when will that information become public?
We don't use any specifics, let's see, please.
It's the item Minister for Local Government.
50 or 51, did you say?
50.
50.
Oh, 50. Hold on. Wait, hold on, I've got a different page, 50. Why do I have that? So hold on a second. Hold on. I'm in a different document.
Should we remove a motion before we ask questions?
Yes, good idea councillor, let me just make sure that I'm on the right page, give me a moment again.
Norris.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I don't have any, as long as I look at, yeah, just make sure I don't have an interest in anything going on here. Did it be printed twice? Okay, so if we go back to here. Okay, yes. All right, point, do we have a mover and secondor for this?
So, I move a motion?
Happy to second.
Yep. Moved councillor AJ, secondor councillor McNort. We have a question from councillor Restevsky. About when will it be made public, I should make a point councillor Restevsky, that Bay, no, Georgia's River Council actually publishes their list of current legal matters publicly on their website, as an ongoing thing, and therefore doesn't need to go to council, and it's publicly available for everyone to see, so if you wanted, council could do something similar as well.
Most, most definitely, I'd like to then change the motion to point one, receive the report and make legal cases and fees made public.
Well, I think the best wording is to make it similar to, similar to Georgia's River Council. I can't tell the extent of the information that they have on that.
Can we get, maybe move it and then get a report to, whatever this comes quarterly, but before the next legal report comes to us, get a report back on what happens in councils who publish the report and how we will be able to do that, whether we need to, just get the information first, it should come back to us well before we receive another one of these reports.
And I'm, for members of the, so is the mover and secondor happy with that?
We can just add that, I'm sure we will be happy, yeah.
And just mindful as well, for the members of the local planning, sorry, this South West Sydney Regional Planning Panel, that matters here in the Lamb Environment Court, if we're members of the panel, are we, do we have to declare that? Because who are they actually taking, a deemed sub, a deemed refusal, for example, when the matter's up for determination by the panel? Who are they actually taking to court, and therefore should we declare an interest? I would think that we probably should. court and therefore should we declare an interest? I would think that we probably should. If that makes sense. So for example, I'll give you page seven sixty four, page, item number fourteen. Now that is an application that is part of the south, that is being determined by the South West Sydney Planning Panel, originally when it was referred to there based on its size. Councillor, the Deputy Mayor, myself, I think councillor Rostewski are members of the, of that body. Therefore, should we be declaring an interest? Now, it sounds technical and. Go through to the CEO.
Thank you. I'll refer to the general counsel.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, Mr Mayor, why you would need to declare an interest on that. Um, the code of conduct calls for you to declare interest where you've got a pecuniary interest or a non pecuniary interest, which is defined primarily by reference to the relationships that you have. Um, what you have here is a noting report, um, in circumstances where you've been involved in the decision in a councillor capacity. I, I'm just not sure how, how an interest would arise, although that of course is a matter for you to decide.
Yes.
It's not, it's not obvious to me how it arises. Just secondly, in relation to the point around publication, this council amended the legal services policy, um, earlier this year to include in it the, uh, possibility of publishing this information online rather than, um, bringing it in a report quarterly to the council. So you gave me the choice. Um, we have been investigating, doing that very thing. It's just a logistical thing to work out how we're going to do it. We've been investigating it. So hopefully it will be relatively easy to tell you some more about that.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Does, do we need a point two or we? More, um.
I mean, if we've been investigating that, um, the intent is there for us to, I guess, have a conversation with George's River, if that's how they do it. I, I don't know if we need to, to include it or not. It seems like we, we, you know, the, the general counsel knows the intent.
Yeah. So I think it's still valid. We can get it and see how, just to, just to progress it along then, I guess. All right. Is there any further discussion?
Just one more. Um, there's an item there involving the footbridge with, uh, Canterbury Bankstown Council. From reading, uh, this, it quite, could have quite a significant impact on our budget. Has that been factored in?
Yeah, through the chair, yes, it has. A, a number of scenarios and hypotheses have been factored in. We are currently still in dispute with Canterbury Bankstown Council over the maintenance and perpetuity of that footbridge. And we are likely to be headed back to some jurisdiction early in the new year.
And, and for clarification, this is proceedings that we commenced against Bankstown Council?
That is correct. We commenced the proceedings.
Cool. If there's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it unanimous. All right. Conf zero four for those councils would like to excuse themselves for a moment.
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Yep. Sure that out of the way. Moved councillor McNaught, seconded councillor Hart. Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions, um, uh, through the acting CEO to the relevant director. Um. Are the number of nominees that council received, is the number of nominees that council received, consistent with one nominees, the number of nominees that council has received in the past and two, consistent with the number of nominees other councils receive in respect of the similar sort of award, if you have that information? Oh, sorry.
Thank you for the acting CEO. Um, to answer your first question, yes, it is consistent across the last four years and I've got some breakdown on that data which I can provide. Um, in terms of the other councils, I also understand that it's quite consistent in terms of what they're getting. Uh, and we've got some strategies to improve this, um, which I'm happy to bring to council.
Um, yes, I, I just find it rather concerning that Liverpool with, you know, two hundred odd thousand, three hundred odd thousand residents can only get the number of nominees that it had for these awards, I would have thought. But, um, handing them out as a fait accompli, uh, is a bit, um, demeaning of the award. I would hope that, yeah, that we could probably, um, improve the, the process that we get some more nominees so that we can have a.
I think we should focus on that part versus your previous comments. Because I'm sure the people nominated are fantastic.
Oh, no, I have no doubt of that. I have no doubt of that. But it's, when there's only one, there's no.
You'd like to see more rigorous, more, more choice.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I'm sure we can have.
Councillor McNaught?
Yeah, if I can comment as a member of that committee, which we all are members of that committee, um, and, and implore all councillors to, and we, we were given that invitation to, to, you know, seek more nominations and things like that. So I think that's on all of us to promote this kind of, you know, we have some amazing citizens in our LGA, um, and I'd like to see, um, all of us take up that invite to, to get that, that word out. Um, I think we, we need to celebrate our people as often as we can.
So how long is the nomination process open for, um, through the acting CEO?
Uh, through the acting CEO, I do have that, I believe it was yet, it is, may, and it opened in May and it closed in August.
I think, and I think it was extended to allow for more. Sorry, microphone.
It was extended, I believe, sorry, uh, uh, through, um, through the chair. It was extended, um, until sometime in November, I think, or, no, sorry, it may have been October, maybe in October.
And can I say, councillor, a lot of the people that you think of, when you think of them, they actually receive, they've already received it already. Because that's what's happened a lot of the time. Thinking, oh, what about that person?
I have no doubt.
A few years back.
Um, uh, so why was it extended? Was it extended because at the end of the first, uh, period, there weren't enough nominees for, uh, awards available? Or is, is, was it extended for a different reason, uh, through the acting CEO?
It was extended to allow for more nominees to be presented. We didn't have enough. Um, and we increased the marketing at that time, uh, for the awards.
Thank you.
Cool. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Councillors, I'll call a ten minute recess. Be back at nine, uh, uh, at nine oh two. Notice councillor Dr Green, page eight fifty seven. Microphone, please. Happy with that?
Yep, I'm happy with that. Thank you. And I thank, um, council for.
You're missing councillor.
Straining that out for me. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Can someone let the deputy mayor and councillor AJ know that we've started, please? Okay. So there's nothing that we need to move, is there?
Oh, I think, uh, some, and I, I think through the mayor, councillor Carnib, did you have a question in relation to this item? The question on notice? Uh, page eight fifty seven. Of book three.
So, hold on. Councillor versus K A. Who's K A? That's what they've done? I'd assume it's people who have challenged their clients.
Yeah.
So they, they surve.
Councillor Bishford.
The police take care of it. Through the, yes, councillor. When you're ready, through the chair.
Um, my question is, this question on notice, um, from councillor Green, would, I guess, would, would everyone agree through the CEO that this span in terms of date range is for a longer period of time than the legal report, um, that we had just, um, perused? And that's why, for example, that some of the quantums may, um, be in excess, or sorry, not in excess, I withdraw that part, may be superior in terms of quantum, um, compared to the report we've just seen. Would that, would that be an accurate assumption?
And I think this looks like parking fines in, in this report as well that are being challenged?
Uh, yes, but I, I, I guess my point is, this report is from a period of the entire of January, um, from January twenty, uh, two thousand and four to current. That would be the case?
Yeah, I'll refer to the CEO.
Yep.
Interrogate any particular figures, but I thi, I think that's right. This, this, this report goes back to January?
Yes.
And the previous report that you looked at was a quarterly report?
Was a quarterly report. Um, my subsequent question to that would be, and, and I'd, I'd ask through, through the, through the chair, perhaps to the CEO and any relevant directorate, but matter number three, I'm not going to talk about the specifics of it, um, but matter number three on page eight fifty eight. My question is, um, there are external lawyer fees, barrister fees, and then respondent costs. Would I be correct in inferring that the respondent costs are costs paid by council to the opposing party? Or would that be a wrong assumption to make?
That's a correct assumption. Um.
My question then is, just for clarity's sake, is there a reason, or are we aware of the reason, why the respondent's costs are such a round figure and less than extra, our external lawyer cost? Is, is it because that those costs were capped for a particular reason?
No, there was a, there was a cost order against the council. There was an amount claimed and there was an amount agreed.
Okay. Oh, so th, this was an amount reached between the parties as to what the, the costs would be?
Yes.
And this report, um, just to understand the details of the numbers, the external lawyer fees and the barrister fees, you would agree are an increase on the quarterly report that we've seen. That would be, that would be right, is my understanding of it. And, and if that's the case, is that because of the, the, is that just how the billing cycle would work of council to its external subcontractors, if I can put it that way, as, as external lawyers and barristers, of course?
I, I would say so. There's certainly, certainly no attempt to mislead.
No, 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 of course. I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that.
It's probably as a timing issue.
It's probably just the timing. Um, because all I wanted to clarify is why there was an increase. My understanding was, is because it was the timing and why were the respondent costs here and not in the previous report? I guess the only clarity I was seeking is, is it because, were those orders made, uh, po, uh, post the last quarterly report? Or is it just based on when, uh, council's team has paid those costs? Is it on invoices payable? Um, or is it on, on court orders?
It's the latter. It's a, it's a, it's a timing between the accounting methodology?
Yes.
And the actual facts of the orders. So that's, that's why it's happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just to add, councillor, you will notice some timing issues with the legal affairs report because we drop a guillotine down.
Yes.
On, on when we provide it.
Of course.
And some things will have happened by the time you get the report that aren't covered because it just cuts off at a particular time.
Okay.
I, I would say that's the reason. As, as I say, this, I don't think there's anything sinister in it.
No, I certainly was not, um, inferring anything sinister. I just, my query was more why were the respondent's costs lower than ours and, and how that was, how was it, how that was reached. But now that you've answered that there was a claim and then there was an agreement between the parties, I guess that makes sense. Yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to, um, conf. There was no voting. Just receiving. There's no motion with there, is it now?
Sorry, just, if I, if I may, I've got, sorry. Can I, can I just ask, and, and this is something I've noticed throughout this report and throughout the previous report, just for my understanding and probably for everyone on the floor's understanding, is it, where, where is the determination made, and it might be through the CEO, through the mayor, to, to the relevant director, where is the determination made that, for example, in-house legal counsel is an appropriate, um, directorate or function to use in certain matters? And when is it appropriate to then determine we use external lawyers? Because throughout this, I haven't been able to, um, gather where that kind of decision-making lies. For example, obviously in item three, external lawyers were used, external barristers were used, obviously being barristers. But in other scenarios, it's obviously the case of in-house solicitors. Now, I can understand why in local court matters, it would be the case that certain, you know, in-house lawyers may do it. But who decides that? That we decide to go out and, and, and pay X amount of fees for a particular function, for a particular case? Um, and why, and why don't we? Like, what's the criteria for that to occur rather than using our in-house legal team?
In, in, in broad terms, councillor, it's a mix of capacity and capability. So sometimes we've got both internally and we manage the matters internally. And sometimes we make the judgment that council is better served. Well, it could be for one of those reasons, to, to go external. That, the actual instruction of external lawyers falls to me under council's legal services policy. Um, I usually make those decisions on instructions. So I, you know, I discuss those matters with the business units that, you know, that are driving the particular litigation.
I think one, I, I hope one final question. I notice a lot of these, up to one seventy five, um, it would say, for example, um, a number of those matters are, um, are dealt with by police prosecutors who I would anticipate represent council in circumstances where somebody being a constituent would just elect a penalty notice. And that's why it's dealt with. So those matters aren't dealt with in-house. We don't send an in-house solicitor. Those matters are clearly dealt with by police prosecutors. And that would encompass a fair bit of, really, the matters in this particular report raised by the question from councillor Green. And then that, that's essentially from pay, from item fifty one all the way through to one, one sixty ish, if my numbers have served me right. And then, um, there are a number of in-house solicitors used, almost really, actually for every item apart from two and three. Um, just final question on, on item three, the barrister fees, I would presume, and if I can get some, if, if, if you have the answer for it today or, or whether it's on notice, is that a team or is that just a senior council? Is that a junior council? Is that a combination of both?
Uh, it was a team. So it was a combination of senior and junior council.
Mm hmm. Okay. Yeah. Because I think, um, I think I'll, I'll limit my questions to that for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to conf zero six, project twenty six, page ace seventy three, with the recommendation on page eight hundred and seventy four.
Move to defer this issue, this motion, this item, please.
Move, that'd be deferred. Councillor Green, is there a seconder? Councillor Deputy Mayor, any discussion?
Uh, I think that, um, I think this is, uh, such a, a very heavy and meaty proposal that it requires a specific, a thorough briefing of its own. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the work that was, has. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the work that was, has been put into it. But, um, I, I certainly, being for myself, uh, would be I'm reluctant to make a decision based on a fifteen or twenty-minute um presentation. I think there's a lot to discuss here. There's a lot to debate here. Um, so I think it's best deferred in where we can.
To a further.
Workshop, absolutely.
To a workshop. Is the second happy? Is Deputy Mayor happy with that? We have the word to workshop.
I think just on that, um, sorry, Mr. Mayor, um, it would be great to, if we were to have a workshop, make sure and try and make it as accessible as possible to all councillors. Um, so we can all sit down together, the eleven of us, to discuss this thoroughly. I think we did something very similar for Khan's Hill, and I think we got a very positive result out of that with that discussion that we had together. And I think this, the scope and size of this project, project twenty-six, warrants that.
I, I would suggest, um, you know, to, to be, you know, to, to, to treat this with the, um, uh, the attention that it would need, that we would, it would, we'd need a workshop of at least a minimum of two hours, if not more, to be able to thoroughly go through, that we fully understand. You know, that we can, uh, field questions, because there may very well be a further report that may need to come back.
Yep. No, I think that's understood.
Through, through the chair, I just wanted to thank the staff for their hard work on this, um. Idea or way of going forward, but previously in previous, um, through the previous C E O, we asked for a particular report as councillors and councillor Green probably agree with me on this. On. Um, non-revenue raising assets that are sitting there and we're not doing anything with, whether they're empty, they're old, we can't renovate them. Um, as such, is that going to be part of this, Mr. Uh, through the chair to the acting C E O? They haven't, they haven't done it yet. It's been a year and a half.
Yes.
So is that available now to us? Can we see that list now? Or is it, because the la- the last conversation I had was it still in preparation? We haven't got it. And that was probably two months ago, maybe more. Yeah. In, in the conversation that we're going to have with, about this, knowing these assets that are non-revenue raising and we don't have, we can't do anything with and they're just sitting there. Obviously, we'll chit a, a lot of light into what we can do with them going forward, because at the moment, they're sitting there doing nothing. I could name three or four just in, in the local area that I live in, that actually residents are complaining about saying that they're useless. Even council mows the grass, no one uses them, they're too old, we can't rent them out.
Okay, so to the extent that council would like to see a list of two thousand seven hundred and something properties on an Excel spreadsheet, I can provide that this evening. The way the project is set up on one of the streams, and I think this takes it to councillor's amun's comments, is that in any case, a tranche of properties would come back to this forum and provide the exact detail that you're after. So I've got, I've got a list, I've got a list of properties at the moment. It, it hypothetically, I would tranche ten of those, say, for March, and each of those properties would have. Um, let's just say it's on a page, it would have the property, it would be a photograph of the property, a map of the property, what's the property worth, the book value of the property, potential revenue opportunities for the property, cost to sell, uh, and some options in relation to the property. So all, all the detail would, would then go back to council for you to make a decision as to the future of that asset.
Yep. Sorry, th- through the chair, you're saying that you're going to give us the whole list of everything that we own, where the actual report that we requested back in probably, I think, February of last year, we requested for non-revenue raising assets that are sitting there that the community can't use, and we're not getting any money of. And I'm sorry to, to, to say this, we had an asset that we're probably going to the next, um, next notice of motion or question. We're, we're getting two hundred and forty thousand dollars for, and the property's worth seventeen million dollars. So from an accounting and a book point of view, and I'm not having a dig at anybody, please don't get me wrong, I'm with, I support whatever's going to happen. But getting two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, seventeen million dollars on it, on a revenue, I don't know, Mr. Rushevsky, what do you think of that sort of revenue?
Um, I'm actually looking at the item and, uh, um, actually, is this confidential, are you? Um, yeah, so there was a, no, I'm just saying they, they realised there was a, there was a, a five-time cost bigger than budget to relocate, um, the S E S. So I can understand why they've done that in this instance.
But in terms of revenue for, for that property, that's worth seventeen million dollars. The rent that we're receiving.
We should be get, we should be getting a minimum, minimum, minimum five percent yield.
That's what I'm trying to say. So what, what I want, Mr. C E O, is to see a report that says property X photo saying it's worth this much and we're getting this much for it. Should we keep it? You make the decision, let us know you on the staff. Yes or no?
I, I guess.
Decision collectively.
I, I guess this imply, like we get every month the report with regards to our cash and our investment, saying, well, here is the market rate and here's how we performed above or below. Exactly the same thing with property. That's, that's, uh, that tells you whether we're performing, underperforming. Sorry, councillor.
Uh, uh, look, um, and, and thank you for the work that has been done on this project. And I guess in a way we're all sort of talking about the same thing, but in a different language. Is that, you know, we're, we're talking about identifying assets and talking about their, the, the way that they perform for us and whether there's a better way for them to perform. And I think we're all sort of asking for the same thing. I'm hoping that sitting in a room together, eleven people, that we actually can nut this out very um, very clearly, because I think we are all talking around the same thing, identification of underperforming and, and super performing assets and working out unemotionally what's best for our L G A. Am, am I correct?
Yeah, I think we're on the same page. I just, uh, we would like to understand the granularity of which the briefing session would go through a linear exploration of each item on a list of two thousand seven hundred and make an assumption then based on what are that, what assets are returning value to council. Project twenty-six talks about that in the, in the document in relation to, we'll do that work for council, right? And what you will see is a much lighter list, um, because some of these property assets are meters of grass. Some of them are civic place. So there's a whole lot of different assets in the asset class. So, um, it would take us a lot longer than two hours to run through a list to give any kind of clarity. Um, we could, we could put a scenario up where we could put up a, 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 a dummy tranche for discussion and nut out what exactly what you wanted to see in each of the assessments. That could be a possibility.
Hmm. I guess, yeah, what is, what is the, the low hanging fruit, councillor Green?
I think that was, was the basis of the question that we asked back in February when, um, this kind of discussion first kicked off. But I guess it was the mechanics of, of, and the process of how project twenty-six would actually work. Um, and that we each, or all of us had the same information. Um, I, as I said, I don't feel I can make an informed decision uh, on a fifteen-minute presentation. I think it's, it, it is, it is a significant decision for a council to make. And it's not a decision that should be made lightly, but needs to be considered. And we do it when we consider it soberly and, um, and rationally. So, um, that is why, um, you know, I would, um, you know, saying defer it, that we can all then fully understand it and come to the table together uh, with the questions that, uh, that, that we may have, the debate that we need to have, and then identifying out of that particular, um, list that we asked for. Not necessarily the seventeen hundred odd that you're referring to, um, Mr. C E O. Um, but the, the, you know, the, the, um. Yeah, 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 as, as councillor Moon has described.
I can name you three or four off the top of my head today that are non-revenue raising, that have been empty for at least four or five years. Um, grass is growing in them, ones that used to be childcare's, which I've discussed with the director. Um, simply properties that are sitting there doing nothing. And council's paying for the maintenance or council's paying for, I don't know if we charge ourselves rates or not. But these are things that are costs to us. So at the end of the day, we need the list, whether it's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty properties that are low hanging fruit, that's never been, haven't been locked. Let's put a benchmark of, say, properties that haven't been used for five years. Something like that, something along those lines, that we are, they're not revenue raising. We can't see them getting, um, replenished or fixed or repaired. You know, and we can move forward with that, because at the moment, if you're going to give us a list of two thousand properties, sure, it's not going to take us two, two hours to go through it. It'll take us twenty, twenty days to go through it. We need a short list, a list of twenty, thirty, forty, fifty properties, saying these are the properties that are available, that have not been used in five years. Council hasn't, hasn't been able to raise the revenue from them. We haven't been able to give them out to a community group or facility to be rented out. The option is for us to answer them or tear them down and rebuild the same, on the same ground and do, do another project on them that can give us some money back. Because at the moment, like a particular one on, on, am I allowed to name a street? On, on, on Hill Road, Lanier. Used to be a preschool with, with an institution that runs, um, next to it. Now we've built this brand-new facility, people have moved across from one to the other, and we've kept the old, um, facility there. It's been, it's been there for four years, unrented, unused, no one's able to go into it. It's actually become a hazard because kids are jumping the fence. I had, I had constituents ringing me saying, council needs to do something about it. These are the sort of properties that we need to look at. We're not, we're not saying, come and look at Civic Place and tell us what you're going to do with it. We know Civic Place is revenue raising, and it's, it's doing a great job, or it's forecasted to do a great job. But we need these older properties that we can't do anything with.
I, I should say that on the council moon back in twenty fifteen, I think it was, the reason why the vision to build Phillips Park was purely because you had buildings across the road that were dilapidated. And the point was to sell them and build a new, or build a new facility, then sell them, because there's no point redoing them. So that was the original reason why we decided at that time to build a facility.
And we're still unhoused properties and we're still paying the maintenance and we're still paying.
Correct, so the plan was not implemented.
It hasn't been followed. So they, they're the type of properties that myself and councillor Green.
Councillor Green.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that, uh, this, this would be, what we're discussing and would be discussing in the workshop is a significant change of direction for this council. As part of that, we need also not only ourselves to understand that and to be, but we need to be able to explain it. But the, the community needs to come along this journey with us. And if we don't fully understand it and what the implications are, what the potentials are, what the challenges are, what the opportunities might be, then we can't have those conversations with our, with our, our constituents and our communities. So, um, that is why I'm asking for the deferral and that we'll have an opportunity to fully workshop it together and in work collectively and collaboratively, um, you know, around the table.
Councillor, if I can comment, I, I agree with pretty much everything you said then, but I don't know if it's that much of a difference from what council's done. Council has, but it hasn't been, never been packaged up, because we've been buying and selling assets, yeah. It's, it's, it's viewed as much bigger indeed, but just generally speaking, you know, this building is testament to a two hundred million dollar development here, which required a lot of land purchasing and so on and so forth. Councillor A J?
Yeah, I think, um, to the chair and to the acting C E O, I think what the councillors wants you to do is write a book of peak performance of what we're winning and what we're losing. Once you bring that, we have two hours, according to, um, councillor Green, Dr. Green. Two hours, we sit down, we go through it, and we say that this is profitable, this is not profitable. This is going to help us, this is not going to help us. And that, that book is our new book for twenty twenty-six project. So you have done good job. And, um, just give us that book. Thank you.
Just, if I can make, I'll get to you once. I think councillor Green, I think to your point even further, something of this magnitude of these assets and stuff, you know, if we were a board or something, we would have a sort of a subcommittee that dealt with this sort of commercial or this, these sort of commercial decisions where they can be thoroughly interrogated in detail. Because if you think about a capacity issue, um, you know, you probably could only work on five or ten things at once. It's very, they are, these things do take time and they are consuming. Um, so, um, and the governance structure you put over that, I think, is, i- i- is important. And then that's when you can really delve into, yep, we're going down this path. So, because this report talks about, yes, give us the staff, give us what we need to, so we can start doing this. But I think there's, we have to look at, we can discuss this in that workshop, about what is the governance framework to put around this, um, to go for. Like Deputy Mayor?
Yes, uh, this is deja vu. We've gone through this over the, my sixteen years many times. We've been talking about selling pocket parks, places like that, and I've resisted the temptation to do that. And one of the reasons is not long, oh, in twenty eighteen, Mr. Mayor, we went to America to have a look around. We were looking at what cities do to improve their current, if you like, what, what, what's happening there.
Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Twenty eighteen, I think it was.
I wasn't with you then.
When was it?
I think fifteen or sixteen.
That's exactly, sorry.
Well, I finished up in sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the thing that was so interesting, we went with a, uh, a, uh, professor from university whose job it was to look at Liverpool and see what we could do to improve Liverpool. So we went to the States to have a look to see what they did there in various places. Dallas, uh, Los Angeles, New York, Manhattan. And one of the things that struck me, in Manhattan in particular, you've got all these tall buildings. But scattered throughout Manhattan, there were these small pocket parks. And there were hundreds of people using them, you may remember. And so previously, we've talked about selling these pocket parks, and it's all very well selling them now because we don't have high-rise or high-density housing around it. But in twenty years' time, or thereabouts, you will have, and you won't have those pocket parks. You won't have the money to buy them. So you need to be very careful of what you're thinking of selling now. And then in twenty, thirty years' time, future generations, I won't be around, some of you won't be around. And they're going to say, why did they sell that? We could use that now. Now, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, and, uh, the direct C E O spoke about the, the Lewis Centre. And I agree, we actually looked at the Lewis, C T Lewis Centre. We looked at that prior to looking at Phillips Park. And we had some ideas about using that land to pay for Phillips Park. And rather than sell it, and I must admit, I'm dead against selling, I believe leasing is a better option because future generations can decide, no, we now have a use for it, where if you sell it, forget it, you can't do that. You may not have the resources to be able to buy it back. So while I don't, uh, disagree with what you're trying to do, be careful which assets you sell. You might want to look at the other option of leasing, and I thought you could lease for ninety-nine years. And obviously you can't do that. Our councils can only lease, I believe, twenty-one or twenty-five years. But even that, that is, you can do it again. You don't have to limit yourself to releasing it for twenty-one years. In twenty-one years' time, I'm pretty sure that you can do the same trick again. But the point is, just be careful of what you're doing. It does have implications for future generations.
Thank, thank you, councillor Har, through, through the chair. Uh, I, I, I support your, your, your vision and, and your views on, on the, on the leasing part of it. But on a property that's giving you revenue of two hundred and seventy thousand and the what you, what you'll sell it for is seventeen million, it'll take you twenty-five years or thirty years to get that money in the kitty. So, uh, it, it outweighs it, but in, in return, if you were to rent it out to somebody for twenty-five years, people won't rent it for twenty-five years to go. people won't rent it for twenty five years to go build something on it and establish something on it for twenty five years. You've got to give them at least fifty or ninety nine as per what that council used to do before. Twenty five years comes around in the corner these days. It's not like, you know, I remember when I was twenty five, that was twenty five years ago.
Look, ca-, uh, councillor, I think that, summarize everything, the, what deputy mayor is saying is that the these are significant decisions, you know, um, you know, you look at this, council has four hundred plus million dollars, um, in the bank at the moment. Um, we then look at the obligations we have. If we think back, if we went back in time, councillor Har, had we had, went out there and borrowed a whole bunch of money and bought land in Austral, right, we would be in a much better off position. And I think this is where we really need to be thinking about the complexity of what we need to do. And I think a bit of councillor Moon's point is that, well, if you have, if you sell something, as what do you do with the money? Do you buy something different or where does it go? And I think these are, we, we have significant challenges that we need to, we deal with. I know one thing we don't talk about much anymore is the infrastructure backlog. If you remember that one, that was a very important term many years ago. Um, but that infrastructure backlog is still there. Um, and then I think, yeah, how do we maximize it? I know buildings that are, yeah, even School of Art has been empty, I think for ten years. Uh, you know, in this, you know, call that fifty grand a year, there's half a million dollars that we potentially could have had. So, so I think when we have buildings to lease, we're not even, it looks like they're not even being fully leased. But I think ultimately, these are very detailed discussions. And if I put this the way that we deal with our cash portfolio, that we have a financial advisor, an investment advisor who tells us where to put that money, right, because that's what they do every day and breathe. And you'd almost think that you need a similar scenario with this about what to actually do. Because if, if this portfolio, in my view, as I always love to see this, I'd love to see us having a property portfolio worth a billion dollars, returning us a five to six percent yield. That's fifty to sixty million dollars we could be getting back. So we've actually grown our assets, grown our land holdings and have a strong yield. So we're getting the annual returns, plus we're getting the capital growth. I think that's something that we should be aspiring to, um, you know, and, and it's, um, and how to do that, these are more detailed discussions. So I think ultimately be mindful of time, we defer this matter to a workshop, we have a good discussion about how we go about this. Um, the staff have indicated what they want to do this year, I've done that, thank you, wonderful. We need to think about that and what sort of, you know, uh, governance framework we can put on it, how we go about doing this in a, in a more organized fashion, I think is what everyone is here, I'm hearing. Is there any further discussion? Or put the matter, all those in favor, raise your hands, against, I declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero seven, councillor McNaul.
Move to defer.
Do you have a second, or a second councillor Moon? Any discussion?
I'm happy to speak to it if anyone wants me to, but otherwise, happy to put it in the interest of time.
I'll put a foreshadowed motion.
Uh, yes councillor Sevsky, what's your foreshadowed motion?
As per the book, uh, obviously taking out point two.
So, if there's no point two, then there's a budget implication um, on that. Um, do you have a second for your motion?
Second councillor Kineb. Just need to see, need to get some advice on this because point two says what we just discussed about project twenty six.
Through the chair.
Pardon? What councillor said?
You can leave it in there, but obviously we'll have to adjust, it says November in there, maybe, um, put a different month.
Yeah, say February. And they'll have to say, acknowledge that report titled project twenty six was deferred and that we dealt with in a meeting in, say, February.
Or dealt with by a, a workshop.
Yeah, but I'll have to come back, you'll have to come back to council still, not being that perspicacious, I won't talk about the workshop.
All right, councillor McNaul, would you like to speak for your motion?
Mr Mayor, we just spent about twenty minutes talking about the previous motion where we talked about assets and their, what they do for council and getting a comprehensive list and having a workshop about it. And so for exactly all of those reasons that we all just discussed, I would like to, this is a property and an asset of ours that I'd like to bring into that discussion that we just, we are planning to have in a workshop. And I don't think that we should make any decisions until we have that workshop that we all just, uh, exhaustively spoke about.
Are there any other speakers? For or against councillor Moon?
I'd like to speak for. Um, as councillor McNaul mentioned, we spent twenty minutes trying to explain how the budget works and if we take something out of one place, how we should be putting it in a different place. And who are you making adjustment one minute later on a potential either fourteen million or finding fourteen million from another source within the, the twenty twenty six project. So if you, if we don't defer, why do we have point two in there? Because if we're going to look at twenty twenty six, project twenty six, that's the reason why we're deferring. We're looking at project twenty six as a package. So we need to defer this item to actually make relevant adjustments to try and make sure that this works.
So for clarity then, should the motion that this item be deferred to and be dealt with as part of
Yep.
The project twenty six report?
Yep.
So moving, yeah, second, yes, councillor Green?
I note, um, in the second last paragraph on page eight nine one, um, there's a, a contemporary offer for lease. So my question would be, um, through the chair to the C, to the acting CEO. If this were deferred, again, what impact will that have on, uh, the lease, which is then, then, because then, uh, the property would be fully leased, if I'm not wrong.
Thank you, good question. Uh, there's no impact because the conditions of the lease, the lessor understands the property could be sold or retained. So supergas are happy to occupy on the conditions they're in the lease, so we won't lose them off the hook. Um, in relation to my motion. Oh, um, just looking at these numbers, um, without mentioning numbers, um, there is quite a significant cost to relocate the SES, literally, sorry?
The tenants.
Yeah, that, okay, the tenant. Uh, I'm not mentioning numbers, so that's fine. Um, but that's literally half, nearly half the valuation of the price. If you take that out and we don't need to, uh, do the relocation, you're taking the lease in there. It's giving around a three point three percent return, which is pretty much, uh, some properties are returning that at the moment. So I don't, um, see an issue with withholding this asset at the moment, considering that, um, yeah, and, um, I, I don't know how decision was made to sell something and a month later, I would realise that the actual cost is five times what we determined. Um, so it makes sense to keep this asset considering that item that's in the report.
Well, I'd, I'd like to, on that point, and it's, and it's a valid point, I'd like to see a breakdown of how that five, how that number was achieved. Because it's a, it's a significant number and it's quite a variation. Um, and considering we, you know, we talked about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for a pump, you know, and scrutinize that, I definitely would like to have that number scrutinized to where it comes from. Um, because I can tell you what, there are other, what that, once again, without using names, but there are other similar organizations that serve the community, um, who are tenants of council. Uh, and they cannot have females volunteer in the organization because of the state of the asset. And that is a, an issue. Um, and I guess I, I, I bring that up because it's, uh, you know, I think there is a broader, when you, there's a higher, there's a higher level issue here about, well, what happens with them, what happens with these, these people. And there's got to be a bit more of a strategic look because I don't think it's appropriate to turn away volunteer female members because you don't have a toilet in the facility and it's, you know, and once again, it's been a retrofitted facility. But I definitely would like to get more views on that five million dollars. That's without using names, sorry. So just got to go back to, sorry, order of, um, business. Uh, councillor McNaul's motion is the, is the, that it says be deferred and dealt with. So we just need to deal with that and speaking for or against. Does anybody just want to speak for or against councillor McNaul's motion? I'm assuming. Um, uh, yes, if you'd like to.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so considering, uh, as we, we've been talking, you know, we need to have a look at our assets holistically. We've heard from the acting CEO that we have a tenant who's willing to go in then now under the, under the conditions that we're under. So I don't see any issue with deferring this to be considered as part of the entire package, which will come back into the early meetings of next year. Give us a thorough look at what's going on, where we can, where we can, um, how we can best use our assets to, um, benefit most people in the LGA and we don't lose by doing this.
All right. Okay, councillor McNaul has had her right of reply. I'll put the motion for deferral. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Against? Did you vote? Are you voting for the deferral or not the deferral? Because I'm sure I saw your hand go for the deferral, so. I think, um, yes, yeah, I think, yeah. And look, there's a general view of deferring things, so yeah, I'm not going to get into the debate, so. I'll, I'll redo that one. If you want to, the motion that moves that it be deferred and discusses part of project twenty six, please raise your hands. Against? I declare the motion lost. We now have the foreshadowed motion. Uh, as moved by councillor Sevsky, would you like to speak for your, against your motion or for your motion councillor Sevsky?
Uh, just quickly, like I said, I've just done some numbers, three point three percent return, which is not bad. Uh, some properties are selling that, so.
What did you say, three point three percent?
Yeah, yeah, some resident, sorry, commercial properties are returning that, um. So considering that cost that's in there, which we can't talk about, it makes sense to, uh, to not sell.
Yep.
Can I speak against the foreshadowed motion?
Yep.
I mean, we're, we're not talk, we're talking rough figures and that's fine, but you know, we don't know what the threshold is for project twenty six to, for an asset to be considered in the, in the favorable or unfavorable basket. So I just feel like we are jumping the gun and we do not have any legit reason. I mean, we've got people to go in here, they're going to be renting it anyway. Why, why, why not consider this as part of the whole project? I, I'm just very passionate about giving this property in particular exactly the same respect that we're giving every other property by deferring the last motion.
Um, I completely agree with, um, what councillor McNaul has raised. Um, but I am speaking in favor of the motion because it would be jumping the gun to sell the property rather than retaining it and keeping it as part of, uh, the project twenty six consideration so that we can, um, uh, assess the merits, the financial merits, the return on investment, the return on, uh, rather the lease that this would, property would make, again, without discussing numbers and, and who or may, may or not, may or may not be the tenants. So it would be jumping the gun absolutely to sell it as opposed to retaining it, considering it as part of the two thousand seven hundred odd assets of parcels of land that, um, council owners, the acting CEO pointed out earlier, so that may take it to now two thousand seven hundred and one. Um, so you can add another line to the spreadsheet to send us out. Um, but yes, it would be jumping the gun to sell it rather than considering it as part of the package. I totally agree with councillor McNaul and that's why this should be supported.
At what point did you, did we say that we're voting to sell it? We, we voted to actually defer it, not sell it. Voting to defer something is for us to investigate what can we, what can be done with it like any other property that's on the portfolio. So no one was voting to sell or to buy. I don't understand where you got the, the voting to sell part of it.
I just wanted to clarify that as well, that I, there was no vote to sell the asset.
Yes, sorry, I, I would like to, yes, you're right, clarify that. Um, the, the foreshadowed motion is to, um, rescind the sale of a property.
Sorry, through the chair, please, everyone.
Can, is that the case, that the foreshadowed motion as put there, as moved by the book?
Yes, so ultimately, council, council and the budget made a decision to go out there and to sell this asset. Now, thank, so now what we're saying is, well, defer, defer, yeah, ultimately you're talking about now. And that was a decision that was made in singularity in one asset in a two thousand plus property portfolio. Now we have a report about project twenty six and it's saying defer that to be considered as part of this. So it's not saying anything for other, because either way, if in doing point one, right, you've got a situation, if you fast forward, um, that the original recommendation of the CEO says, well, we'll put other assets into it. So to make up the budget, the budget differentiation. So if you don't do project twenty six or look at it singularity, ultimately, you've got to find an asset to replace this.
Well, um, project twenty six is not selling assets as a whole, is identifying which assets you're going to be selling. So this one in particular, from my calculations and based on the numbers in the book, they're all over here, valuation, projected rental return, uh, relocation costs, the numbers are here, do your numbers, three point three percent return. If it was my asset, I'd keep it.
Yeah, but I think, uh, the, uh, once again, we just interrogated a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty five thousand dollar water pump. Uh, I think we need to, we need to interrogate that five million dollars and what, what are the numbers behind that five million dollars? I'm sure nobody would disagree with putting that attention to that number. But yeah, ultimately, you, you've got a, you have to, you have to replace this with something else. That's what this report is based upon. Well,
Is that true?
If you don't, then there's a, it affects all along to all, all the forecasting and the budget.
So be it. Um, this, this is an asset that I'm against selling and I think most people are. Um, we're going to ultimately have to deal with this issue, that there will be a, a, a budget deficit based on this adjustment. Let's get real and, um, rather than deferring it back and forth, back and forth, let's know the exact numbers and move on to it and deal with it where we can. If we have to make further cuts.
Councillor Moon, what's your point of order?
We are working through the issues. Get, you, you just said get real, we are real.
Yeah, councillor, if I can ask you to withdraw that comment, please, I think.
Yeah, get the real numbers, yeah. Well, you cut me off.
Yeah, but even so, I guess, yeah, real numbers, the, the point understood, everyone, if we just get down there, but I think, uh, yeah.
I totally agree with councillor Sevsky in terms of looking at this asset. I'm not against not selling the asset or selling the asset. What I'm looking at is this asset now is part of a portfolio that we're going to investigate to see what we can and can't do on a long-term strategy for this council. So if we're going to take something out today, what are we going to do? We're going to come back in ten days and say, oh, it was possible? No, let's defer this matter and look at a way that we can put, look in this basket and say this is what we can do as a council. Now today, if you, if we're going to sit here and play point scoring on a deficit that's gone wrong or on forecasting that's gone wrong, that's totally up to you guys. We're not here to play games. We're here to actually look at numbers and see how we can resolve this issue. This issue came about and you've raised it and I totally agree with you. If we pull this out today, there's going to be, show a deficit. Is that what, is that what your plan is? Is this just show a deficit? Then yeah, vote for it and say, no, we don't want to, we want to take it out. Fair enough. But what we need to do as a council is look at, look at the problem and find solutions for the benefit of our constituents that actually voted us in here. If we're going to play point scoring, yeah, no worries, let's sit here and play all day long.
Thank, thank you councillor Moon. Thank, thank you, Counselor Moon, Counselor Kneeb. Counselor Kneeb.
Yes, look, just through the chair, I just think steering us back on track, my view is, and the way I interpret this particular foreshadowed motion, which I seconded, is the whole purpose of Project Twenty Six is to be able to identify undervalued, underperforming assets and put council in a position, put council in a position to be, to be able to determine what is best based on the numbers to go out and consider selling all of those factors. Of course, when you take into account Deputy Mayor Hall's comments about not letting go of the little parks and the future risk we may cause to future generations and things like that. All this motion, this foreshadowed motion does is put this asset back into council's hands for further investigation to determine. All it does, in my opinion, is rescind the proposed sale of it. It doesn't necessarily mean, for example, of course, my view is that this asset is not sold. That's my opinion. Of course, it's subject to council's determination at a point in time. But all of this, all this foreshadowed motion essentially does is put it back in the bucket like every other item in Project Twenty Six to be discussed. It doesn't necessarily, it, it, it's not, it, my view is that this asset is not sold and that's, that's what this foreshadowed motion deals with. It's not about semantics of budget deficits and what have you. It's about, it's a, it's a, it's, it's an asset, it's a community asset and I'm of the view that it shouldn't be sold. And deferring it to deal with it in Project Twenty Six, the problem with this particular item and the urgency of dealing with it is the fact that it's been put out there to be sold. That was a resolution of council, is my understanding. And therefore, the reason there is an urgency to deal with it now is because it doesn't, it didn't automatically fall into the bucket of Project Twenty Six because it had, had it been, it'd be something we'd be discussing at the workshop. But it's a singular item by default and we're dealing with it as a singular item by default. And my position is this is not an asset that would fall within the realms of something that I would be supporting in Project Twenty Six in any event. It's a matter for councillors as to what, what their position is, of course, but this is essentially just rescinding on that. The budgetary result of this is, is what it is, as Counselor Sevsky said earlier, and it's something that's going to need to be dealt with. This is just something in my view that needs to, this foreshadowed motion needs to be supported, that's my position.
So you, you bring up an interesting word there, rescind, but I'll, I'll get to that in a moment. Um, Counselor Hart?
Uh, I just wanted, through the mayor, Counselor Kneeb, I, I understand, um, your sentiment around putting the asset back into so-called bucket. Um, and you know, the, 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 the context of the motion is to just do that. Basically, it is a budget, budget adjustment. But, um, at the same time, uh, if we put it back in the bucket, um, and if, uh, if council come back and say that, you know, this is an uneconomical asset, then we're back at square one and, you know, as part of Project Twenty Six, if we do end up resolving, um, uh, to go ahead with that program, then we're not moving ahead at all. Like, we're just going around and around and around.
So you, 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 you bring up, uh, sorry, I want to, you, you bring up an interesting point there. Uh, Counselor Kneeb, and you mentioned the word rescind. So if you go through the process of what council has done, we went on public exhibition for a budget, put it out for community feedback that talked about, here's our budget position, asset sale in there, define the asset sale as part of that, no? That budget now is what staff are working towards, what all our assumptions are going for. Now, by decoupling this from Project Twenty Six, the original way this is written, where the staff are saying to us, look, we're still going to meet our budget position because we're going to change it by putting this Project Twenty Six. So it's built on the assumption that Project Twenty Six go through. Now the Project Twenty Six hasn't gone through as part of this, right? You now have a significant change. So ideally, you need to rescind that element of the budget and say, okay, no, we're not going ahead with this, which transforms the budget because Counselor Hart, I think, was saying, ultimately, if you don't do it like that, we're sitting here again in February, you know, all your long-term financial plans need to be changed and so on and so forth. So you kind of, you have to do this with Project Twenty Six. If not, it's got to be the point, the first point, that point of the original budget has to be rescinded.
My, um, point to, to that Project Twenty Six, um, I, I like the merits of it, but that hasn't gone to community consultation. So we can't tie in this budget adjustment singular item in Project Twenty Six. Now, we're not going to sell the item, it's returning a great return, three point three percent. There's no need to sell it. If there is a budget deficit, we have to deal with it. Let's deal with it. If we need to make cuts in any departments or readjust the budget, we've got a new council, we've been elected through public consultation. I know people that voted for me didn't want this asset sold and I can say that for a lot of councillors here. So let's just put the motion, either way, we're dealing with it.
But yeah, so if we need to deal with the budget shortfall now, then we need to deal with it. So if you want to cut departments, you need to, you need to say, well, how do you? Because if not, we have to change all the long-term financial plans and the knock-on effect has to be dealt with as part of this because that's definitive in the way that this is now written, that you're ruling it out completely.
Through, through the chair, if we were to do that now, wouldn't you have to go back out to community consultation on a new budget that you've got?
Pretty much something of that significance, it's a percentage.
Because it's a huge number.
It's a huge number.
Can we get legal advice and, and if we need to go out to, because it's not ten dollars?
No. Look, I think the, um.
We don't need to go to public consultation, we've been elected to, to deal with these items. So if we have to go to public consultation every time we're adjusting the budget, what's the point of having councillors? We're here to, to do the best for our constituents, act prudently. This sale, from what I can see in discussions, is not going to occur. Let's deal with it today, let's deal with the budget. Obviously, we're not going to deal with all these cuts this evening, that's going to come to another meeting. But let's just deal with this item separately and basically see what position we are realistically in. I, I wouldn't be selling a personal asset if I, if I was in a deficit. I would be making cuts to my spending and that's some of the areas that we need to look at. And we've looked at some of the festivals and whatnot, that's an area that we need to focus on.
So to Counselor Moon's point and to you to respond, Counselor Sevsky, that the community, through public exhibition, accepted the position that council's putting itself in, which ultimately it's their money and their assets for the next twelve month period. To now turn around and say, well, no, we're changing that, we're going from a surplus to a significant deficit now because of that, then the community deserves to be consulted on that as part of this. This is not a budget adjustment, this is a significant change to the budget. And now you're tying it into cutting services from the community. Pardon? Sorry, microphone, please.
We, we talked about spending money on influences and festivals. I mean, if you can't pay the mortgage, you don't have a house party every week. You, you make adjustments where necessary. Festivals will come back in, we're in a much stronger position.
So would you, would you want to cut the festival, the events?
We need to work out our, our budget situation first.
So why don't you put that into the budget, put that in motion?
Because you told me that specifically, now you're changing your position, that I can't specifically mention items. We're dealing with this one item. I'm sure at ten oh five at night, it's, we're not going to finish where I want to see cuts and we're all not going to finish that within the hour. That's a separate meeting and I'm sure we're going to be dealing with it at the next December meeting.
But there's a, there's an, there's an issue, then why don't you defer this till the December meeting and incorporate them into once? So that way you go to the community, you've adopted this position, that's where we are and we're still maintaining that and that's how we're doing it.
The community does not want this sold. The community does not want this asset sold and I can say that because.
Why not put on exhibition then and get the community to say that? You have nothing to quantify that, councillor.
We're here to manage the budget, we, we're not going to get a consultation every time we need to make a budget adjustment. They have confidence in us to do the right thing.
Counselor, there is a significant change into the budget, but this is not a, it's, it's, it's forty, it's forty million dollars in the budget, it's a significant number. It's a, it's a, and you're, you're, you're now publicly saying that you want to cut services that council's delivering to the community and you don't want to consult them? And you want, all council's saying is defer this and deal with this in a holistic fashion.
We've already dealt with that, voted that down, let's put the motion forward. It's not fourteen million, if you read the book, there's an item in there which I can't mention, obviously, but it's not fourteen million.
But that's the whole point in understanding, point two talks about, we're going to replace this with that. Now you're saying, you're going to, you're going to, we're going to pull this out and we still haven't made a decision with what we're replacing with. If you can choose what we can replace it with, I'm fine with it because then that position that we went out to the community is the same because this has a flow on to people's rates and they pay rates. If this doesn't happen, there's a rate, there's a problem with the rates. And if you want to do what you said, what's, what was the impact of the events? Was at one point, how much are we spending on events again? Yeah? I know we have that, are we, huh? Just one second, I just asked through the CEO. Sorry, can we have the microphones, please?
Uh, through the CEO, for, for clarity, are we talking about just the festivals, experience the world? Is that's what we're, um, that's about one point two to one point six or just double check the figure?
Yeah, and, yeah, and how much of that is, uh, would be wages? I guess if you cut it, would you cut, would you be cutting staff?
Well, that would be something that will be impacted and would have to consider.
Hmm, no. So there you go, there's another twelve, twelve point eight million to go. Counselor Kneeb?
Yeah, look, I, I really don't think, my, my, I don't think this is about festivals and cutting services to the community. I think this issue purely deals, um, with the sale of this particular asset. And I'm of the view that upon executing this motion and it being put, it would actually better inform Project Twenty Six and really identify the lay of the land on where you're able to prioritize undervalued, uh, under, undervalued assets, underperforming assets and being, being able to make more acute decisions there. This, for whatever reason, was put before the previous council, as I understand it, and it was decided upon in a singular fashion. Similarly, it's.
Yeah, sorry.
My, my position is.
That's what I'm saying, it was, what he's referring to is Project Twenty Six looking at a holistic where this was just mentioned, this wasn't mentioned that.
Thank you.
Yeah, go on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My position is that this deals with an asset that's been dealt with. It goes to restoring the position of not disposing of the asset, which in my view is, is a valued asset to the community and holding on to it has its better advantages for future generations and this council. Um, I'm of the view that it doesn't need to be dealt with Project, with Project Twenty Six. It was, Project Twenty Six was devised and, and significant effort has been put into it by staff to be able to determine a number, from the sounds of it, thousands of assets, not just this one single asset. And making a decision on this won't necessarily put the other ones in jeopardy. In fact, it will be able to inform the appropriate department as to what to prioritize and what not to. But if councillors have a particular view on this, on this foreshadowed motion, it was in the book. Um, so in any event.
Correct, but not, the point two is different and that's my point. So if you're going to pull, if you're going to pull out fourteen million dollars and not talk about a replacement.
I'm not suggesting that there's not going to be a replacement. Clearly, that's what I hope that as a council, we can go to a workshop on. And I genuinely think that we would be better informed as councillors once this motion, this foreshadowed motion is dealt with because then we know the fiscal position of where we're at and, and what Project Twenty Six will entail because there's, there's thousands of assets.
And so that's the thing, if you, if you, if you pull this without putting something in between, as was, was originally proposed in this motion, then you have to at other points, update the long-term financial master plan and give us an.
I think, I think what you could do. And I'm just, I'm just speaking off tongue here, but I think what you could do is, is perhaps consider in addition to, to the way this is laid out and that is that the fund, the, in terms of replacement funding, if that's what we're talking about, in terms of replacement funding, that could be garnered from the workshop on Project Twenty Six and decisions to be made from there because of course it's something that I suspect as all councillors, it's, it's probably going to be something that's going to be considered. And that's the whole purpose, right, of, of considering the, the selling of, of those, of certain assets which are underperforming or whatever the reason may be.
Yep.
Is to be able to put ourselves in a position to thrive, like you suggested earlier, that is, to be able to perhaps acquire more thriving assets in different areas. This is just one of those assets that I think, in terms of my opinion, I don't know what other councillors' views are, but in terms of supporting the holding of this asset opposed to its disposing should be dealt with. That's my, that's my view.
Yeah, so once again, so if you get to, and I think we're kind of all trying to say something similar here, right? But what I'm getting at is the technical implications of the decision-making and the process, right? You're ultimately, you've taken your budget, right, by adopting it in this way and deferring Project Twenty Six, right? If you, if you turn around and said, well, go, let's go ahead with Project Twenty Six, no problems, we can adopt this and move on, right? Because that doesn't, the way that it's written is we're not having an impact on that. You'd imagine Project Twenty Six would come straight away, here's what we're replacing it with, right? Now by turning around and saying that now we, we, we're still considering Project Twenty Six, you have taken, you've got to go back to council's number one role, approving a budget, right? You've now completely altered that document by adopting it in this fashion. If you adjust the wording, you can still achieve what you want to, what Council McNaut wants to and keep things moving along. Because they, this is, this is linked to numerous, this is linked to numerous documents, right? That affects us in numerous ways. So for example, we have to make responsible decision-making in a prudent fashion, right? How do we, how do we do this without looking at the long-term financial plan? How do we do this and looking what this do to our debt service ratios? Yeah? Let's go, yeah, happened, huh? But which is the point of why is, why, to Counselor McNaut, but why not just defer this and look at it holistically? Sorry, microphone, please.
Principally, it's wrong to sell this asset, we need to deal with it today. We're not going to sell it, I, I, I believe we're not going, we've got the numbers not to sell it.
It's, it's, it's not, Counselor Sevsky.
Have a look at the.
Counselor Sevsky, you, you have, you, you publicly stated that you have an alliance and you're in a coalition with the Labour Party, as you did on Facebook. You have the numbers.
Point of order.
Hold on, no, no, you said that, did you not say?
You also said Christmas was going to be canceled.
Huh?
You said Christmas was going to be canceled.
I never said Christmas was going to be canceled.
I've got it here.
Counselor Sevsky.
Let's deal with that as well.
Counselor Sevsky.
If you want to get in the gutter, happy to get in the gutter with you.
Point of order, Counselor Sevsky, right? You're talking about making a prudent decision in council and you don't want to know the impacts of this, right? You, you're boasting about having the numbers, all right? I'm making a simple point here. You have to adjust your motion, right, and look at the financial impacts of your motion. That is rule one oh one of local government. You're saying you don't want to do that because you have the numbers. Use the, you just said that, councillor.
I said in terms of selling the property.
You just said that.
Yes, in terms of sale of the property, we don't want to sell it. As far as I know, majority of councils don't want to sell it. So let's deal with it and instead of playing these.
No problems, so you need to add points into there, point five.
What would you suggest?
The long-term, uh, getting the long-term, what affected, you need to know what the effect of long-term financial master plan is that we councils adopted, right?
Well, wait a second, we've got a meeting on Project Twenty Six in February. So that's three months away, why would you want to add a point five? In terms of long-term, when we're going to be dealing with Project Twenty Six in February?
Because, this is what I've been trying to say. This is linked directly to that. We did not adopt Project Twenty Six. Had we adopted Project Twenty Six, yes. So if you want to say, let's rescind the previous motion, adopt Project Twenty Six, this can go ahead, no problems. Right? No, no, but then, no, 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 it's, it's not because you have to look at the financial impacts.
All right, um, to the mayor, can I?
Counselor AJ.
Yes, can I say something? I think we are, like, the point that Counselor, um, Revesky is making and then what the mayor is making is that decision has been made previously that they injected this to the budget twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. And now we said that, okay, we want to look at everything holistically. We're going to have a meeting and we defer the Project Twenty Six because we want to have a look at everything we have according to, um, Counselor Gray. And, and we all agree that we defer that project. So if we defer this as well, then we have the meeting for two hours or three hours, whatever the hours might be, look at all the asset we have and look at which one is beneficial to sell and which one is non-beneficial to sell. But right now, I, my understanding is that if we want to take this emotion on and say that, okay, we, we want to implement this, then it's going to affect the budget that they already made, um, previous, um, councillors put together. So if you defer it, the question is that if we defer it, does it mean that the asset is sold? So let, let's think about it, otherwise we'll be here until midnight. If we defer it and the asset is not sold and they're going to come back to us and we discuss it on the Project Twenty Six, then we should defer it and look into it. That's what I'll play with all the councillors. Otherwise, we will be here debating, debating because some councillors, which is the previous councillors, have made a decision and we are looking at it and say, it might not be beneficial for our future, um, budget that we want to do. And that is why we have moved a motion that we defer the Project Twenty Six and everything that we're going to sit down for two hours and discuss. And that consequently, we have to apply the same thing to this. And if the answer is that if we defer this and it's not going to be sold with that project, then I believe that we should all defer it so that we can have time to look at it holistically. Thank you.
Can we just put the motion and deal with it?
Isn't the reason why the issue came up, uh, to, to, in, in terms of rescinding, as it is. uh, to, to, in, in terms of rescinding, as it is said and stated in the executive summary, um, that, uh, that in, in selling the property, it undermines the Woodwood Park precinct? Was that not the reason why from the beginning? And I believe that it was one of the main reasons that, uh, in, in the debate, uh, the original debate on the potential sale of this particular property, that, uh, to do so would undermine, uh, that particular priest, that, that. Put my teeth back in. But would undermine that particular master plan. Now, I, I, I'm getting a little bit, um, confused and a little tad frustrated in that, uh, the, the, where that decision that was made by council before, um, I've lost my train of thought. Baga. It's getting late.
Think about it, yeah.
But, but.
It's, while you think about it, it's the, it's the undermining that's the issue, right? But the undermining and that's, what's different is about this is that, once again, it was withdrawn, but there was something else to go in place of it. Now there's nothing else to go in place of it.
There wasn't anything to go in place of it.
It was the adoption, technically, not specifically, but there was a process of going there and which was Project Twenty Six.
But the, the problem, the, the issue for me now is that in, we, we, we're asked by the executive summary to, uh, to rescind it because on, based on other reasons why it needed to be. And now all of a sudden it's being melded into Project Twenty Twenty Six, which, I mean, they're two very separate issues.
But that's point two of the recommendation. If you pull that up on page, page eight hundred and ninety in confidential booklet.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm, I'm here.
Yeah.
With, with that.
So.
Um, yeah.
So if you want, what, what this needs, as is, a point five that says, update the long-term financial plan about the impact, about, about, about the, update the long-term financial plan and the impact on the fin, on council's financial ratios.
So if.
When we talk about, um, consulting the community, the community is yet to be consulted on what it would mean for that particular tenant to be shifted to another location and the surrounding residents around that, on how that might affect what impacts that may have besides the cost. So you've got the cost where there are people are questioning, you want that cost interrogated, that's fine. Then, then, I mean, other conversations that I have heard in the community is then you have another community group in that other suggested location that are then upset about, well, what's going to happen to us? So it's a bit of a domino effect that's actually out, out there and re- remembering that, that particular tenant in that particular location that has been fitted out for purpose. And then to move them, to move that tenant, you're then asked again to refit out a, 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 a second, the, the second location fit for purpose. This will be the third time that that particular tenant has been moved around the LGA. And council continues to pay, or to, which we are obliged to, as I understand it by legislation, to make sure that the facility is fit for purpose for that particular tenant. I, 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 that blows my mind because the, the, the logic behind it just doesn't make any sense to me. But I'll go back to originally that, that there were reasons why that was put to us that that needed to be rescinded.
Yep.
And in the executive summary, that's what I'm being asked to do.
Yeah, which once again, no issues, as long as if we're incorporating a point five along those lines and whether you want to go back to the community or not, but ultimately we need a report back to us on what is the impact on all those items, right? I, I'll put it, and just on the point councillor Green as well, that particular tenant, it's actually in a flood zone as well. So it's actually, there's a bit of a challenge with that location anyway. Um, but, which this doesn't talk about. Yeah. Yep, okay, cool. All right. If five is in there, I'm happy to go, I'm happy to be able to, uh, put that. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hands against.
Division.
Division's been called. All those in favour, please stand. Cool, thank you. I declare the motion carried. I know what's going on. Against, uh, next item is conf zero eight. Py Hill Reserve, which we received an email about. Move councillor McNamara, second to councillor AJ. For the recommendation. Is there any discussion?
At next time with, um, something like this, when we get, uh, for a project that's obviously under construction, are we able to get, um, you know, diagrams, plans, drawings, artist impressions, whatever it is, so, you know, we can visualize it. Like I, I tried to go online today to try and find information about Py Hill Reserve. And all I found was a final concept plan and there was just one overhead, um, uh, drawing, diagram, and that was all I could find. So it'd be great to get more information next time.
There we go. Ask a new sheriff, see you. Wonderful. All right, if there's, uh, any further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Declare the motion carried and then I'll declare the meet, oh, oh, mayoral minute, how could I forget? Thank you. Councillors, I'll move the mayoral minute, basically, which said, uh, council resolved already to do the, the CEO, uh, uh, performance review panel. We must do that. Um, we must conduct those. Uh, it's been six months since the KPIs were done, henceforth the importance to continue on with them. And I'm moving that council, uh, appoint a councillor to satisfy the resolution. Uh, point seven as part of it originally. Councillor Green?
I just need to ask a question and please forgive me if it might sound stupid.
No such thing as a stupid question.
Very long day. I've had a very long drive today. Um, when we talk about the performance review panel for the CEO, which CEO are we talking about?
The acting CEO.
Oh, okay. Because I think we don't have.
Yeah. The acting CEO, the acting CEO still has KPIs and they still have to be performance managed through that.
Just a question, any particular reason why this didn't make the agenda item? We just got given it today.
The, it wasn't, um, when we put forward, when we dealt with this in the first meeting, I thought that it was done with. I've been advised that, no, we didn't actually appoint a councillor. So if we wait till the tenth of December, then that limits the time that we can have to performance review. Because we had the last, the KPIs have been in place since, um, ju, end of, middle of June. So this kind of, if we adopt it now, this allows us to get, to be within the six-month period so we can set up a meeting.
Um, I'd propose, the, the motion doesn't require a second because it's a mayoral minute. Um, I nominate councillor Carnib.
I would second that nomination.
Yep. Councillor Carnib, do you accept? Are there any other further? Microphone, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, just to confirm, this is in relation to the acting CEOs, the review that doesn't currently exist and this is really just to, to make sure that it does exist. Is that the purpose of this?
It, it, um, so there's KPIs.
Yes.
And after the council election with the new councillors, we have to establish a, a performance review panel.
Yep.
So.
And this is purely for that purpose, for the performance review panel.
Yeah, so the KPIs were set previously. We'd monitor those, we'd go against those KPIs and then we'd go on from there.
Yeah, yeah, look, I accept the nomination. I thank the councillors.
Are there any other nominations?
Could I just ask a question? Uh, which councillor has been nominated by the CEO?
I don't think any at this stage.
Does that also, given the fact that to comply with the resolution, that would have to be, um, dealt with?
They appoint as, it's not a decision for council. He can notify, he'll notify us.
Notify us though.
And that's sometimes probably by emails, how it's usually been done.
Okay, that's fine. I was just double checking because, you know, going through this, you know, we, we have missed one, so we don't want to miss another.
Yep. No, good point. All right, if there's no other nominations.
Just a question?
Yes, deputy mayor.
You have three people listed, is that correct?
So.
Mayor, deputy mayor and someone else.
Mayor, deputy mayor and now councillor Carnib. And then, and then the, the CEO will then appoint, will then nominate someone.
Pick it, pick it, yes, okay. Now, now that means that would be four on there.
Yes.
Yes. The other thing is KPIs. If, uh, those people are going.
Sorry, sorry, and there will be an independent observer in accordance with the OLG guidelines.
Yes, in, in previous, I've been on those things, as you have too. There's usually, there's either four or five people and the fifth is the independent observer.
Yes.
So you've got three here, so we, we need another one.
No, so three is one, two, three.
Yes.
Right? Fourth will be his appointed and the fifth will be the independent observer.
Okay.
Yeah.
And could, could we also have, if we're on this, and obviously I am, uh, could we have the KPIs? So we've got an idea of what we're assessing.
Yep.
And, and in the past, I've been on these and the KPIs, in my humble opinion, been all over the place. And we should be, in my humble opinion, again, use the KPIs that are sanctioned by the Office of Local Government. I think that, that's the very minimum that we should do. And I've been on the previous one where we didn't quite end up settling what the KPIs were and consequently it was never done.
We, we got there in June.
You did, did you?
We got there. We said, we said, we said them. They were, they were set in June. There was a lot of, uh, went around the world.
Yes, absolutely.
And we finally got there.
Good, thank you.
All right, um.
I just have another very brief question, sorry. Uh, there's a line here that says attachment guidelines for the appointment and oversight of general managers, but that doesn't seem to have been circulated at all. Maybe I didn't get a copy.
By email?
By email.
Anyway, if you just Google the CEO, the OLG.
It's on the OLG website.
OLG CEO.
Thank you.
Now, we'll make sure, make sure it gets sent out. All right, well, if there's only one, do we even vote on it? There's only one nominee, then uh, councillor Carnib is. No, you vote on it. No, it doesn't make a difference. All right, I'll put the motion, that councillor Carnib there, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. That being said, there being known for the business, declare meeting clause at ten thirty. Thank you.